Good morning, everybody. Today is October 1st, 2024. This is the regular meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We will begin our meeting with a moment of silence. I want to have, I haven't checked with my colleagues. There's been things happening here. Anyone have a moment of silence before I go ahead and start speaking? Please.
Just the impact that Hurricane Helene has had, is that what you're going to do?
Go for it.
Okay.
Please.
On communities from Florida all the way up to North Carolina. It's absolutely devastating. We're seeing so many stories of devastation and life loss. And I know we have delegations from our local Gold Country, Red Cross, that are headed out and deploying to serve those areas. And there's going to be a heavy need for a long time of financial support and volunteer support. And I encourage anybody to support in the ways that they can through the many months and years ahead.
Thank you for that. If we can please have a moment of silence. Phoenix, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And I know you recognize we have friends with us today. We will introduce them momentarily. We just have to go through a certain procedure first. So next on our agenda is consideration of extra items, not appearing on the posted agenda. Anything to add?
No, no extra items.
Okay, and nothing from board member as well? All right, let's go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Anyone wish to pull any items from our consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and open up for the public. Anyone wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Please come on up to the microphone if you're in the chamber or raise your hand if you are on Zoom. And seeing none of the above, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the consent agenda as posted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we move on to our 9:02 a.m. item, public input. And we will begin by asking our friends here to introduce themselves. And I will start to my left. Leah? Stick your face right in that microphone, Leah. What's that right here? And we'll go down.
Hi, I'm Leah.
Where are you from?
I'm from Lower Lake, California.
Awesome. And you're in 4H, and what is your title?
I'm in 4H Anderson Marsh.
Awesome.
Hi, my name is Emmylou Hayes, and I live in Lower Lake. And this is my sixth year in 4H.
Very nice.
Hello, I'm Phoenix Rain. I live in Hinn Valley, and I go to the Anderson Marsh 4H. And I'm going on my eighth year of 4H.
Hi, my name is Presley Vassard. I live in Lakeport. I go to Blue Heron 4H, and I'm working on my 10th year in 4H.
Hi, my name is Faith McIntyre. I'm a part of the Kelseyville FFA chapter, and this will be my 12th year raising livestock.
And we will get into more details as we get to our proclamation. I do want to open up for any other public comment at this point on anything not related to the agenda. And I know this was related to a proclamation, but we kind of fibbed that one a little bit.
Hi, Elaine Brown. I'm an educator. I'm glad to see the youth up here today. So I didn't realize the youth were going to be here today, but what I wanted to bring forth, as young people, you understand if you have a piggy bank or, you know, we used to count that as kids, a great way to learn money. And so my concern is for the county is I'm asking for just every month to see what monies are going out and what monies are coming in. Pretty simple. If you have like a piggy bank, you can figure that out. And I'm not getting that clear cut. And so I'm asking help, you know, from the board. I just want to see how expenditures, money going in and out of the piggy bank is happening from month to month. Pretty easy to understand. And I'd like a copy of that. They can send it to me electronically. I will make the copies myself. But I want to see how the money is spent, because if you don't know how the money is spent, if I want to ask for a project from one of the people up here, like yourself, I don't know what's there that I can ask for. And I want to see how the money is going. It's just a simple thing that you do in a house. So that's why I'm here today. And I just want to say, every time they have a meeting like this, whether it's a school board or this kind of board, this is the power you have as a public citizen. You get three minutes to say anything that's on your mind that you care about, and you want to take advantage of that, because it is we, the people, not just a small group of people that make decisions, you get to make the decisions. So use this time in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Please work with your district supervisor to get that information. That information is available. Any other public input? Again, nothing related to our agenda items. I see none in the chamber and none in the Zoom room. So we'll go ahead and close public input and move to our 9:03 a.m. pet of the week.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Officer Murray with the Lake County Animal Care and Control. And today I have brought with me Odie. He is our six-month-old German Shepherd, who just wants to be held 24/7. He is a very, very sweet dog. For being six months, he's fairly well behaved. And he gets along great with other animals, and he gets along great with people, as we can see. He would honestly do really well in any type of household. So I mean, if you'd like to come down and meet Odie or any of our other pets, you can give us a call at 707-263-0278, or come down and meet us at 4949 Hellbush Drive. Thank you.
That's a lot of love. Thank you so much, Odie. All right, let's go ahead and move on to our 9:05 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Designated the Month of October 2024 as Pregnancy and Early Infant Loss Awareness Month in Lake County.
Do you want to come up, Tom?
Thanks for joining us today. The Board of Supervisors County of Lake State of California Proclamation Designating the Month of October 2024 as Pregnancy and Early Infant Loss Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas pregnancy and early infant loss is more common than we realize, it is estimated in the United States that one in four pregnancies end in miscarriage. One in 175 pregnancies ends in stillbirth, and five infants per 1,000 die before their first birthday. And whereas many Lake County parents and families have suffered a miscarriage, a stillbirth, or the death of an infant during delivery or shortly after birth, and such a terrible loss is often not recognized. And whereas Lake County wishes to acknowledge the profound grief experienced by families who suffer the death of a small child, infant, or preterm baby. And whereas even the shortest lives are still valuable, and the grief of those who mourn the loss of these lives is significant. And whereas the 15th Day of October is recognized in the United States and around the world as a day of remembrance and awareness of pregnancy and early infant loss, when Motherwise will host a free community event at 6:00 p.m. at that ranch in Lakeport for those who have experienced this profound loss. And whereas increased awareness of the causes and impacts surrounding pregnancy and infant loss may lead to greater understanding, support, and resources in communities across Lake County. And whereas Recognizing Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month and Remembrance Day would enable the people of Lake County to consider how, as individuals and communities, they can meet the needs of bereaved mothers, fathers, and family members, and work to prevent the causes of these deaths. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Pregnancy and Early Infant Loss Awareness Month in Lake County, California, and encourage parents, caregivers, and all residents to become educated in opportunities to prevent pregnancy and early infant loss, and to support bereaved families when prevention is not possible. Passed and adopted this first day of October 2024. Thanks for being here today. This is always a really difficult one. But it's important that we talk about it. It's important that we're open with each other about it, that we can support each other. And it is so much more common than we realize. And unfortunately, the club of the membership expands yearly. So more and more of us are here. But I also really need to mention that with restrictions on women's health care across the country, mortality rate for women is rising significantly. And in the last two years, it's gone up 56% in the state of Texas. So I'll just leave that with you and pass the microphone.
Hi, my name is Sabrina. I run Motherwise. I'm the executive director. As Jessica said, you know, a lot of, a lot of us, we don't talk about it. And it feels like a shameful thing and something that we want to keep private. And for those who do want to keep it private, we truly understand. But part of our work is to de-stigmatize what happens to so, so many people and families. And part of the way we do that is to gather publicly and to speak openly and lovingly and honestly about our losses. And so it was mentioned in the proclamation, but we'd love to invite anyone who's experienced pregnancy or early infant loss to join us on October 15th. It's a Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. at that ranch. It's a really lovely ceremony. Hospice comes as well, and I'd be remiss to not mention hospice as well. They are an incredible, incredible service in this county for those who've experienced pregnancy and infant loss. So we hope to see those of you who feel like showing up and being held by the community on October 15th.
Anyone else? Yes, hospice has bereavement support. I received that for about a year. And so we will be at that ranch for the night of the 15th. My little one would be 16. All right, anyone else? Anyone from the board? Want to get a picture? We always get. All right, girls, come on up here. We're going to do yours now. Oh, back down.
And so real quick, I'll introduce the item. We are going to move on to item 6.4, our 9:08 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Week of October 6 through 12, 2024 as National 4H Week in Lake County.
Board of Supervisors County of Lake State of California Proclamation Designating the Week of October 6 through 12, 2024. Having reported almost six. Lake County 4H program has over 230 youth and 72 volunteers. California to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders. And whereas 4H is delivered by University of California Cooperative Extension and Community of more than 100 public universities across the nation that provides experiences where young people learn by doing and hands-on projects in areas including health, science, agriculture, and citizenship. And whereas California 4H is led by University of California Cooperative Extension, the research and outreach arm of the University of California's Division of Agriculture and Natural Resources. And whereas National 4H Week showcases the incredible experiences that 4H offers young people and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in Lake County. California, who work with each day to make a positive impact on those around them, and whereas 4H is network of nearly 600,000 volunteers and 3,500 professionals, provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4Hers, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake do hereby proclaim October 6 through 12, 2024 as National 4H Week throughout Lake County, and encourage all our citizens to recognize 4H for the significant impact they have made and continue to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. Passed and adopted this first day of October 2024.
Thank you, Faith. So before the meeting started, I was explaining to the girls, they're all girls here today, about what we do here in the county office or in the board of super, in the chambers of the Board of Supervisors, and how our local government structure works. And all of us are elected and fill these roles. And we're only here for a very short time. So it's really important that locally we invest in our youth so that they can step up and lead, and maybe one day be up here when we're gone, because that's going to happen. So we want you to be very comfortable here in this room and know that this is your government. And you're always welcome here to come and participate, to watch the videos, to give public comment, to always be here. So I want, I know we've got Matt here, who is our UC Extension Director, but I want to hear from all of you girls about the impact that 4H has had on your life, or something that you love, or the projects that you did this year, or what happened at the fair, any of those things. You want to start? Who wants to start?
I have all my stuff written.
Oh, yeah, go grab it. All right, Faith, you can, you're all warmed up. You're ready to go.
I started 4H when I was five, up until my freshman year of high school, when I went into FFA. I raised rabbits, pigs, and a steer through 4H. It's definitely showed me how to be a leader, like the competitiveness of showing livestock while still having the sportsmanship that comes into life every day, no matter what it is. Yeah, it's definitely something I don't regret doing, and I plan to continue doing until I'm ineligible to show livestock.
My 4H experiences have given me valuable leadership, team-building skills, building community, and learning life lessons. I've changed for the better after joining 4H, and I hope I've made positive, oh, wait, positively affected others while being in 4H. I've learned skills I can take with me into the future, and I've even learned about how to effectively communicate with others. I know I will not only keep these skills, but I'll always keep many of my 4H memories and friendships. I have many memories at Fair, in the poultry rabbit barn and the big barn with my friends and many new friendships. I've learned new activities and overall became a better person from 4H. During my time in 4H, I have done many projects, but my favorite is archery. My favorite part of 4H is exploring all the outlets in which I can channel my creativity and passions. I'm an active teen leader in archery arts and crafts project and robotics that I've created, and am teaching, designing, coding, and building. I'm also actively involved in the market lambs and rabbit projects. I received a special opportunity when 4H CES called artists and non-artists from all the clubs to paint a four-by-eight mural on what the 4H experience means to me, and I jumped on it. I came up with a design, sketched it on after sanding and priming it, and then painted all of it, as well as sealing it. It took almost 50 hours to complete in 10 days. But as long as it took, I enjoyed every moment of bringing my creation to life. And I can't wait to see this mural be unveiled for the awards ceremony at that ranch.
I've been in 4H since I was five years old, and I'm a freshman in high school now. I will continue to be in 4H until I'm ineligible. My favorite project this year was raising my market turkeys for the junior livestock auction. They were a lot of work, and they were really hard to raise, but I really liked doing it. They were really fun.
Are you ready? Have any animals? Did you do a project this year?
Yes.
What'd you do?
I did two meat chickens and a showbird.
What kind of showbird?
A beauty d'ember.
Beautiful. Did you camp at Fair?
Yes.
Oh, how was that experience?
Good.
Yeah? This was your first year, right? Yeah, so you have a lot of years ahead of you?
Yes.
Okay. What about you?
I've been in 4H since I was nine years old. And my favorite project this year was my market lambs, stars and stripes. I'm going to miss them, but luckily they're going to a family to feed them. And some of my favorite things about 4H is definitely the teamwork, the friends, and helping others. So, and this year at Fair, I was lucky, I was the lucky winner of the Danny's Wild Award. So, yeah. Yeah.
What's the award?
It's basically for the person that helps out the most and helps others the most. So.
I'm always impressed with the leaders that come out of these programs. I mean, you can see the growth that happens. And they're, by the time they're in high school, you guys are proficient speakers. You're traveling around, you're working on these projects, and you're learning more and more every year. And it's incredible. Matt, did you want to say anything, or anyone else?
Good morning, everyone. Matthew Barnes, University of California Cooperative Extension Director. On behalf of UC ANR, University of California Cooperative Extension, I'd like to thank Supervisor Pyska and the board for once again recognizing National 4H Week. Youth development is really about creating a safe space for the youth to be able to find opportunity. And there's no better program nationwide for that to happen than 4H. And it's really on full display with our girls and our clubs around the lake in Lake County under the leadership of Jean Goulart and Nicole Gentry. So I will let them talk more about the program.
Thank you.
I'm Jean Goulart. I'm the Community Education Specialist for Lake County 4H. I'd like to let you know that Lake County 4H has been going on since 1956. Want to always thank the Board of Supervisors for their support for Lake County 4H all these years and all the years ahead. Nicole? Oh, thank you, yes. We'd also like to mention that, give me a second. Assemblywoman, Assemblymember Cecilia.
Agar.
Agar Curry. Thank you. Brought towards the House prop, nope, House Resolution 119 for the whole state of California to honor this week as 4H Week.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else?
So I will say, this is, between 4H and FFA, I find that these are the best apprenticeship programs that we have to develop our youth and to kind of lead them in a direction of finding out what they want to do in their lives. And if it has anything to do with agriculture, then they've had such an experience under their belts that they are able to take off from there. So I love that we have these programs. I wish we had more like these for other trades and traditional job sectors that we have here. But this is a perfect example of what we can do and what we should do and continue to support. I think, Presley, I'm going to pick on you. I know it's your second time that you've been here. I think after about five times, you get an honorary seat here on the board. But love seeing you coming back. Love seeing the growth, and I really appreciate this. So thank you again.
This is open to boys and girls, just in, you know, in case the public thinks it's a, it's not. And yes, they won't age out until they're 19. So we can see them then. And it's very exciting to have our youth have places to go. And we also need volunteers and adults that have some expertise that would like to share that. We invite speakers to clubs. We want to learn about finance. We want to learn about government. We want to learn, and we want to learn it from the people, our mentors. And so if you have the time to come in, you can check us out online to figure out how you can volunteer for 4H. We run a wonderful camp at the end of June, 4H Camp in Mendo Lake Woodlands. It includes Mendo County and Lake County. And we have workshops for the kids and discover the forest and the science that goes with it. And we're always looking for volunteers to attend and help our children and mentor them. Thank you.
I do have a question. How do we get a hold of 4H if we're interested in registering one of our children?
We have an office in Lakeport on, lake shore?
Lakeport.
Lakeport Boulevard. We have an office on Lakeport Boulevard, and our phone number is 263-6838. And we also have an online website.
Our online website is celake.ucanr.edu. So there's a 4H section, and you can check out that, along with all of the other programs that Lake County Cooperative Extension offers with our advisors also. But everything's on there.
And Nicole will be answering the phone, and she's been with us for 20 years. This is my second year. This is my second year. That's why she knows all of those things.
And I want to ask that, I know we're gonna take a picture. If it's possible to put some of that information on how people in our community can reach out and register, that would be great.
Just very quickly, thank you for pointing out that boys can join. I have seen FFA so many times out in the community, boys and girls expressing leadership. And it's just great to see in any setting. But here today, I want to commend all of you and Supervisor Pyska for really highlighting the importance of creating opportunities for young women to grow into leadership. It has never been needed more than today and in future years. And to know that this organization has been going on for 1956, I'm old. So that's older than me. So thank you for all the hard work that the parents and volunteers and community put into 4H. But thank you so much, young ladies, for being brave enough to stand up here today. Thank you.
Public comment?
Is there any public comment on this? Please come on up to the microphone if you're in the room or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. And seeing none, it's time for a picture. All right, we will continue on to item 6.5, our 9:10 a.m. item. Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing, thank you, Hispanic Heritage Month in Lake County. Please come on up.
All right. If you're here for this proclamation, please come up. Yeah, yeah, we will, we will. And so I just wanted to give some insight that we're gonna conduct this proclamation in English and Spanish. And so we're gonna do paragraph by paragraph. And so I'm gonna let you start.
Junta de Supervisores del Condado de Lake, Estado de California, Proclamación Reconociendo el Mes de la Herencia hispana en el Condado de Lake.
So I just did that first.
All right. Proclamation Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month in Lake County, California. Whereas, Lake County wishes to celebrate the accomplishments of Hispanic Americans who have helped shape our county. We are grateful for the many contributions Hispanic American men and women make to our communities and the vibrancy they weave into our local culture. And I'm glad I didn't read it in Spanish. Whereas, Lake County believes that in diversity, we are strengthened by our diverse beliefs, thoughts, cultures, and experiences. All Hispanic Americans who live in our county have and continue to enrich our classrooms, our neighborhoods, and our places of work, and Whereas, from America's earliest days, Hispanic Americans have played a prominent and important role in our national heritage. And Hispanic Americans continue to embody the pioneering spirit of America today, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to faith, family, and hard work. Hispanic Americans lift up our communities and our economy as entrepreneurs, executives, and small business owners and make contributions in areas such as science, art, music, politics, academia, government, and sports, and
Por cuanto desde los primeros días de América, los hispanoamericanos han desempeñado un papel prominente e importante en nuestro patrimonio nacional. Y los hispanoamericanos continúan encarnando hoy el pionero espíritu de América, demostrando un compromiso inquebrantable con la fe, la familia, y el trabajo arduo. Los hispanoamericanos elevan nuestras comunidades y nuestra economía como empresarios, ejecutivos, y pequeños propietarios de negocios. Y hacen contribuciones en áreas como la ciencia, el arte, la música, la academia, el gobierno, y los deportes.
Whereas, Hispanic-owned small businesses are the fastest-growing businesses in America, starting at a pace 15 times the national average over the last decade. Hispanic Americans own more than 3 million American businesses and serve with honor in all branches of the armed forces, continuing a strong legacy of dedication to our country. Hispanic Americans are a testament to the American promise that anyone can succeed in the United States through hard work. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lake County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims September 15, 2024 through October 15, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Lake County, passed and adopted this first day of October 2024, County of Lake signed. Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Bruno Sabatier. Thank you for doing that. As you could see, even the English version, I was still kind of like, so I would have had a hard time. But I could have read it, I just wouldn't have understood what I was reading. It's very special to conduct this proclamation, especially for me, because my brother, my children, and my nieta, my granddaughter, all have Mexican-American blood. And so for me, it's always gonna be a special connection, and it's always gonna be, they're always gonna be part of my life, and so are their families. So I just wanted to let you know that. And also that I appreciate everything you do and that you're here as well. So thank you for coming. And is anyone else going to say something?
My name is Maria Dolores Arroyo. I was Garcia before. And I grew up in Lake County. I came at three months and have been here ever since. I graduated from Clear Lake High, and I got married in '77, went to Kelseyville, and Kelseyville has been my home since then. So, yeah, I've been here a lot of years, and I've seen a lot of growth. And I tell my kids, when I got here, there was only five Latino families in Lakeport. And boy, have we grown since then. So, yes, thank you very much for this honor.
That's my mom. Anyways, I want to just invite everyone. We are having an event, Dia de los Muertos, here in Lakeport at the New Park. That's on on November 2nd. At the Sabington Park. And we've had it every year in Clear Lake. This year, we're gonna have it here in Lakeport, and we're gonna start alternating it from one year to another. It's a good way to learn a little bit about Dia de los Muertos, which is Day of the Dead, a little bit about the culture. And there's a lot of just information that's always posted up, so. And it's from 10 to 5. Anything else? All right, I think that's it. Thank you.
Anyone from the Board of Supervisors?
Diana, thank you so much for helping with that proclamation. That was really beautiful.
If I could, I came from Fresno, Fresno County, with a very strong Latino population down there and not just a single Hispanic heritage, but hundreds, thousands of different streams, different stories. And I was very privileged to grow up in that community. And everything in this proclamation is absolutely true. Everything I've seen, the hard work of our Mexican-American friends. But also, it'd be remiss if I didn't mention the struggles also that we have seen, people of Latino heritage here illegally, here that came illegally, dreamers, and people who are now, even today, casting aspersions and horribly negative vibes toward people. So I want to celebrate Hispanic heritage while also acknowledging the great struggles that continue on both sides of our border and that as we celebrate Hispanic American heritage, that we also celebrate Hispanic heritage generally without borders, just like our first peoples here have suffered tremendously over the centuries, the struggle of Hispanic Americans. Let's definitely celebrate the achievement, but let's never shy away from looking at the difficulties that brought them here. And let's just keep in mind all those that continue to struggle. Thank you.
Diana, thank you very much. And EJ, thank you. You know, since I've been on the board in the past eight years, it's the first time it was said in the native language. So thank you very much. I was honored today, and hopefully we continue that on with the board. So excellent. Thank you very much.
So a couple of things. I want to talk about my colleague, Vice Chair Crandall. We had a conversation, I believe it was last week, it might have been two weeks ago, about the lack of communication in Spanish to our local residents. And sometimes we talk, and today you have action behind the talk. And I know that you're the one who made the request to have this translated. This is why I asked you to take the lead on this item, because I thought it was very special that it's not just words. There's actions behind those words, and I really appreciate that. Because at what point do we really start to enhance our level of communication when on paper, more than 20% of our population, their primary language is Spanish? We have to engage with those large sectors of our community or else we are lacking the engagement and the participation of that community that we're not communicating with. So thank you very much. Some of the words that are mentioned in there are so true and happening before my eyes. The amount of Hispanic businesses that are thriving in our communities is amazing. It's amazing. I know that I've seen it in Lower Lake, I've seen it in Clear Lake, I see it in Kelseyville, I see it in Lakeport. It is not just one area that's thriving, it is throughout the entire county. I want to find better ways for all of us to engage together. I know, for example, in Sonoma County, there's a Latino Chamber of Commerce, things of the kind. I appreciate Latinos United and their work to ensure that there's cultural activities and events throughout the county. I want to do a quick shout out to Anna Santana and Quayar. I can't remember her first name. Angela Quayar. They do great work to make sure that there's always continued activities and continued attention to the Hispanic culture. But thank you for bringing this today, and thank you all so much for everything that you do. Any public comment?
I'll also just say, the reason why I thought of this was I was gonna read it and be vulnerable. Because the reason I say this is because there's folks that come to the courthouse. And they'll come to me, and I, because when I was in the Army, a lot of folks thought I was either Puerto Rican or so folks will come to me and ask me in Spanish. And I'll do my best to translate, but it's very vulnerable for them to come and do that. So I felt like we should be vulnerable too. But I was a little too scared, so that's why I'm glad that they recruited you. So that's the meaning behind why I recommended to do that. So I just want to let you know that.
Take a picture. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. We will reconvene at, let's do a seven-minute break, 9:55. All right, welcome back. We will move on to our 9:20 a.m. item, 6.6, Lake County 2050 Update, and we have Director Turner with us.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Raya Turner, Community Development Director. Thank you so much for this opportunity to just give you an update on our Lake County 2050 Project. That is the update of our Lake County General Plan and all eight of our local area plans. The month of September, we were able to conclude our second community workshop, which was a much deeper dive on the key issues that came up from our first survey. So our second community survey, they varied between like 15 and 28 pages. So we were really asking a lot out of the public, but they came through. We had hundreds of surveys submitted. And so we are going through the synthesis of that data in order to produce the report for the second community surveys, which is a crucial piece to what we're launching now, our LAIPAC season for September and October. The LAIPAC is the Local Area Plan Advisory Committee. There are eight of them. And we will start our meetings next week, going through the middle of November to discuss a number of the key issues that are important to each planning area. These meetings are meant to be rich with public input. So we're currently working on the schedule right now. There will be combinations of meetings that are virtual and other meetings that will be held in person. And once we get that schedule, we will post it on the website that is the hub for the Lake County 2050 Project. It is, that website is lakecounty2050.org. We will also send it out to the rather vast email notification list that we have gathered as people go on to that website and enter in their emails so that they'll stay informed directly through our email blasts. And we'll also send out press releases. The goal is to encourage as much public input as possible during the next five weeks as we seek to identify consensus on a number of key issues and matters that pertain to people's communities within those planning areas. There is currently one vacancy on a Laypack. It's the Shoreline Communities Planning Area. So if you live in the town of Lucerne or anywhere along the 20, Highway 20 corridor from Lucerne down into the unincorporated areas of Clear Lake, and you're interested in participating, it is an at-large vacancy. That means all you have to do is live in that area. And applications are getting collected right now. Due to the time constraints, since we do need a quick turnaround time for the Laypacks to do their work, we've placed the item for appointments on the October 8th Board of Supervisors' agenda. If you're interested and need more information or an application, you can find an application on the Board of Supervisors' webpage at the lakecountyca.gov website, or just give us a call at 263-2221, or contact the Administrative Office at 707-263-2580, and we will make sure you get an application. Every part of the aspect of this process has been community input focused, because these are community vision-driven, long-term land use plans that affect the way we govern and we develop the county for the next 20 years. So every piece of public input counts, and we will continue our efforts going forward. And I look forward to giving you our next update. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? And just a quick question. I know that the original shoreline, if I understand correctly, included the city of Clear Lake in that map. Obviously, the city is its own area, the general plan will not have anything. Do you have a new map that you might be able to provide to ensure that when we're looking for people, that might be the at-large member, that they're within the correct territory?
We will have updated maps available for the new updated plans. In the meantime, you can take a look, you can apply the planning areas overlay on our GIS website and just skip the part that looks like the city. The city is delineated, just cut that part out.
Nothing else has changed?
Correct.
Okay.
Not at this time, though that is one of the things we're going to be discussing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's open it up for Supervisor Green. Did you have something?
Yeah, thank you. I was just looking at the staff report in Granicus, which wasn't, so lakecounty2050.org, you highlighted that as the main website, under the events or the upcoming meetings, you're still scheduling those, right?
Yes, there is a calendar that will show the meetings on that website as soon as they're getting done. I'm sending out a doodle poll for virtual meetings and in-person meetings to all 71 members of the Laypacks to gather their best opportunities for meetings, and we'll be scheduling around that.
And your best guess when the calendar, very exciting calendar, will start getting populated with those meetings?
Later this week.
Later this week?
Yes.
Okay. So for those just tuning in, lakecounty2050.org, and if you want meeting info, you're either going to get e-blasted, or you're going to bookmark that website and check those meetings coming up.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And then, very briefly, we did receive a public comment from Betsy. She did reference our Vision 2028 process, which is not the same as our advanced planning process for Lake County 2050. That said, it was an interesting comment, and so maybe at some other appropriate time, this board can kind of chew on how this might align with our Vision 2028, or whether they're two separately, two separate processes from here on out. But I like all this impetus on 2050. That's where, again, it's exciting to see advanced planning, so I hope to see good engagement when those meetings do get scheduled.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open it up for public. Anyone from the public have a comment? I see someone getting up and shaking their head that it's not for a comment.
It's like scratching your nose at an auction.
And this was just informational to update us? Just real quick, just so that, I feel like this question has already been asked, and just to clear the air, town halls obviously have been an important part for many other facets of this, but you have Laypacks for each individual area plans, which is not necessarily the town hall.
Correct.
Town halls can still provide their input through the town hall for?
We do look forward to that, absolutely. We do also have one seat on every Laypack for each municipal advisory council or town hall. So there is representation of that on the Laypack.
Perfect. I'm going to open it up for a public comment from Betsy Khan.
I'll just say real quick, I want to thank you, and I appreciate the level, I know, like, what is it, 96 positions or something of the like for advisory in these shoreline, these Laypacks for shoreline and all the other area plan advisory committees? And just the fact that you were open to even move things around and come to, you know, the town council meetings and things like that, it's giving a very, you know, open opportunity for people to give their insight and input. So I think that we're taking every opportunity to do the right thing here.
Thank you. And we are also working on conversations with our tribal nations as well. I anticipate that input to be very valuable.
Thank you very much. Let's open it up for Betsy Khan.
Good morning. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Betsy Khan. I'm an Upper Lake resident. I'm also the sole proprietor of the Essential Public Information Center, which has been involved in county planning and projects since 2005. And I appreciate the fact that I was able to submit my letter, and I did send it to Mariaa yesterday afternoon as well. Appreciate Mr. Green's comments. I do think it's very important to understand the aspirations of Vision 2028 and how those really are guiding lights for our general plan. I mean, I think, you know, I remember Supervisor Piska, when she first became a supervisor, adding a very important item to that list, and how much that has, you know, every single submittal in your Granicus proposals, every staff letter has a checkbox, checkoff box to see if it's affecting different parts of your management system, including that vision. The reason I wrote that letter is not because I have, I'm critical of what you do. In fact, in my communications with the public, I always explain how much the public has a role and how many people in this county are participating as well in this project, as well as many others, as our previous speakers have demonstrated. So, but I do want to support what you're doing and ask you to consider the importance of a group of people who have been very, almost invisible in this county over the years, and that is the ecosystem and environmental organizations. In my work as a reporter, in my work as a community activist, I have engaged in, with hundreds of people who are so deeply appreciative of our beautiful environment here, and the fact that it's not really a completely understood priority for general planning. We have some new projects, like the Parks and Recreation Plan. We have so many members of the General Plan Advisory Committee who are deeply engaged in their areas of expertise, including the tribal members. And I just want to take this moment to encourage the public to be involved and join in those meetings that I know that the Community Development Department is working on. There's a rich history here, and there's also a wonderful opportunity for all of us to create a completely different kind of general plan. It's a privilege to be able to support you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. I see no further hands up in Zoom and no one else getting up for, from the chamber. I'll go ahead and close public comment. I had this thought that Betsy's comment was going to go somewhere else, so I will project her, my thoughts of what I thought she was going to say. I know we tried our best to get everything hybrid for the kickoff meetings. We had a lot of struggle with internet. If Community Development so chooses, there is better opportunity now, because PEC TV did get a mobile internet unit, and we've been making it work everywhere that we go. And so if that's something in the future, that you are looking to do something again that can get those people that are either working, busy doing something else where they can't be in person at a specific meeting, bedbound, whatever it is, whatever the case might be, the opportunity is there. We've upgraded our system to ensure that we can broadcast no matter where we are.
I appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
Because I know that that was something that we tried to do, and unfortunately, in more cases than none, it did not work out very well.
No, it became the poster child for why we need better broadband.
Which is okay, we need those reasons too. But thank you very much for your update. Anything further from board members? All right. And I know that you are taking quite a lot on. This is an important project. And as far as the public's involvement, I've seen what you've done already so far, and I really appreciate the hard effort that you've made to ensure that the public has access to 2050 and their Laypacks as well. And I do agree with Vice Chair Crandall, quite a large number of people to gather, and you're mentioning we have one vacancy. That's pretty good.
Awesome. Yeah, the public involvement has been very, very encouraging so far, so.
So thank you for your update. All right, we have about six minutes until our next timed item, so let's go ahead and move on to 7.0. I believe we have, I saw Rainey Grafton over on our Zoom. If we can go ahead and upgrade her to panelist. Want to open up item 7.3, Consideration of Alternate Public Health Officer Appointments and Professional Services Contract for a Term of Three Months for an Amount Not to Exceed $25,000 for the Term of the Agreement and Authorize the Health Services Director to Sign. Good morning. Are we getting sound? We can hear you. It's a little faint, but we just heard you.
Apologies.
Perfect.
Is that any better?
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you, Board, very much. This morning, we bring to you a request or contract to work with a physician to provide alternate public health officer coverage during vacation and other times. This is a fairly short-term contract, running from October 1st through the end of December, and in that time, we also hope to complete a longer-term contract.
All right. Thank you very much for bringing this to us, so that we stay within the confines of the state law. Any comments or questions? Appreciate that. There is one thing that I wanted to ask. It's one of those that I know the answer to, but just wanted to ask. Dr. Panalasi is a local doctor or an out-of-area doctor?
He's working in Sonoma County.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Supervisor Green? Okay. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone have any comments on this item? Seeing none in the chamber and no hands in the Zoom room, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board.
Move to approve, wait, the recommended action. I'm not crazy about that. We're just approving the contract. Is there an appointment in here? So form of the motion, County Council.
So it would be a motion to approve the professional services contract for a term of three months for an amount not to exceed $25,000 for the term of the agreement and authorize the Health Services Director to sign.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Let's go ahead and move on to consideration of the following advisory board appointment, Kelseyville Cemetery District. We have one applicant, Nellie Gustafson. Any comments or questions on the applicant? Seeing none, let's open it up for public comment. Any comments, questions? Seeing no hands in Zoom and no movement in the chamber, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I move that we appoint Nellie Gustafson to the Kelseyville Cemetery District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. And... At this moment in time, I don't think we can take item 7.4. And with just two minutes left, I think I'm going to ask for just a quick, brief, two-minute break, and we'll go ahead and reconvene at 10:15. All right, welcome back. We will continue where we left off, 6.7, our 10:15 a.m. item, Public Hearing, Consideration of Planning Commission's Recommendation to Approve a Rezone, RZ 23-02, from Open Space Scenic Corridor, Open Space Scenic Combining, to R1 SC Single Family Residential, Scenic Combining. General Plan Amendment, GPAP 23-02, from the Public Facilities PF to Low Density Residential, LDR. Applicant Melissa Lim, 9460 East Highway 20, Glen Haven, at APN number 035041-19. Director Turner.
Thank you, Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. Presenting today will be our senior planner, Laura Hall, and I will turn it over to her.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. My name's Laura Hall with the Community Development Department, and let me bring up this slide. Click. F5. There we go. Yay. This is a rezone and general plan amendment, RZ 2302 and GPAP 2302 and IS 2315 for Melissa Lim. And the project is located at 9460 East Highway 20 in Glen Haven. APN is 03504119. I wanted to let you know that applicant is here to answer any questions you may have. Okay, it should be noted that the properties to the east, west, and south of the project site, which is highlighted in blue, are all single-family R1 zoning designations, which is consistent with the general plan. Let me see. And so, the property, the, how do I move that out of the way?
You might just want to leave it.
Just leave it? Okay. The project is for a rezone, and it would rezone this to a single family, to allow for a single-family residence. It's currently Zone O, Open Space Scenic Combining SC District. And again, the proposal is to rezone to an R1 and Scenic Combining SC District. The general plan amendment would change the Public Facilities PF to a Low Density Residential. These are maps of the existing zoning. The project site is highlighted here in blue, and this is general plan map highlighted in blue. And this is Exhibit A showing the proposed zoning and general plan amendment for the project. The project description and background, the project includes a 4,225 square feet parcel, which is developed with a structure and attached garage, which used to be a fire station owned by the county, and it was sold on February 19, 2020 to the previous property owner. I should make clear that the previous property owner is not the applicant. The applicant bought the property from the previous property owner. Under that sale, a rezone was supposed to be done with the previous property owner, which was not, and the property was sold to the applicant in 2021. A stop-work order was issued on May 4, 2023 by the Building Division. So we looked at the following regulations to see if the project confor- So we looked at the following regulations to see if the project conformed with all the regulations. And we did a SEQA evaluation. And it was determined at this time that although the project was not conforming with existing general plan or zoning ordinance, but under the proposed changed general plan amendment and zoning rezone, it would still be nonconforming with the general plan, but it would become conforming with the zoning ordinance for the R1 zoning designation. On August 22, 2024, Planning Commission made the, did the following actions. They adopted the negative declaration IS 2315 based on the findings in the staff report. And they're recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve the rezone, RZ 2302, subject to the findings and based on the conditions listed in the staff report dated August 22, 2024. They're also recommend, they also recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve the general plan amendment, GPAP 2302, subject to the findings and based on the conditions in the staff report dated August 22, 2024. And lastly, they recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution recommending approval of the general plan amendment, GPAP 2302, and rezone RZ 2302. And staff recommends that supervisors adopt the ordinance approving the rezone, RZ 2302, and adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment, GPAP 2302. And that is the end of the presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I don't think it's super relevant to the action before us today, so it's more of a comment. But I see the applicant would be required to get sprinklers.
Yes.
And I see everything else is intended to be handled with as-built permits after the approval today, if that happens. So I'm a little curious. That seems to be a mismatch. So if it's an as-built structure and we're going to do as-built permits, but then we're all going to, also going to treat it like a new building that would require fire sprinklers. I saw a disconnect on that.
Actually, thank you. I appreciate that question. What you have before you today is actually a change in use, going from the public facility, former use as a fire station, where people are there in and out, in and out, to a residential use where it is expected that people might be there all the time, every day. Because of that change in use, the building code requires that we treat this, it is the same as a new structure and that it is a new residential use. As such, the sprinklers for stick-built or existing structures, they do, the sprinklers are required, as opposed to like a manufactured home, where the law does not require sprinklers on those yet. So, but it is due to its change in use. There are other items that will be covered in the building permit, such as required egress windows. But this was the one that, that our chief building official called out to make sure that Ms. Lim would be aware of it going forward.
All right. Thank you. This seems easy enough, especially as it's surrounded by what it's being rezoned to. And so there doesn't seem to be any spot zoning or anything related to that. It seems to fit in just right. So appreciate the ease on this item right here. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see no hands in Zoom and no one getting up in the audience in the chamber. So I'll bring it back to the board. I believe we have two actions to make.
Mr. Chair, I move that the reading of the ordinance be waived and the title only be read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. If we can read the title, please.
I will give it to you. Big.
Putting everybody on the spot today.
Hurry, put that big one. Oh, thank you. A resolution approving?
Nope.
What? I'm not much help, am I? There you go. Here we go. An ordinance amending section 21 point dash 3.7 of chapter 21 of the ordinance code of the County of Lake by adopting a sectional district zoning map number 3.7B, rezoning the lands for the Lim project.
Thank you very much.
I offer the resolution.
Resolution. Do we need to make a date for the second reading?
Actually, for, Mr. Chair, for the ordinance itself, in this particular instance, your board may offer the ordinance today.
Okay. So three actions, one more for the resolution, and offering the ordinance.
Yes, and just based on the sequence, as for the next action item, it would be the offering of the ordinance.
I offer the ordinance.
Ordinance has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes.
Green?
Aye.
Paeska?
Yes.
Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Last one.
I offer the resolution. I went backwards.
And the resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Crandall?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Paeska?
Yes.
And Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So let's go ahead and take care of our weekly calendars at this moment in time, because our next timed item is at 11:30. And I still don't think we could take up item 7.4 at this moment.
Yes, Chair.
Madam CAO?
Director Ewing is on his way over for his item.
Let's go ahead and start with our calendars, and we'll get to that. Supervisor Green? Would you get us started?
Thank you. No city council tonight. They adjourned the meeting tonight. We'll be national night out, starting at 4:00 p.m. at Hobbiton Community Park. It's always a good community event. Police are out there. It's in a new location tonight. It's probably going to be a little bit friendlier than Park Street. So if you're in Lakeport, about 4 o'clock, come on down to the community park. Thursday, I'll be meeting with City Manager Ingram. We have some things to catch up on. Also be meeting with Director Turner Nunesh. And looks like maybe catching up with Continuum of Care. Sunday, I'll be attending the One Team One Dream event at Soper Reese. And I think that's about it.
All right. Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, finishing up the meeting today, obviously. Looks like, I'm not going to say it. It's moving well today. So don't, don't have much for the rest of the week at this point on the calendar. I will be traveling next week. I will not be here on the 8th. I've got to be at a count for a couple of days. That means also I'll be missing the LTA or APC meeting, which I think is scheduled for the 9th. There's any possibility that you may have an opening on that day. I can forward that to you on Wednesday, the 9th. Thank you very much, Supervisor Green. And then back here, I did have just a question. Do we have a meeting on the 16th, or it's canceled too?
On the 15th, no.
The 15th, I apologize. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Turning on the 22nd.
Supervisor Paeska?
Tomorrow, I have a meeting, the fifth climate, fifth California Climate Assessment meeting. And then I'm going to go to the Tribal Health Fall Celebration. And then I'm going to listen in to the Airport Approach Study for Sonoma County. There is increased air traffic over South County. And I think we need to understand what's happening there and be aware of that. And I've already submitted my comments. So hopefully I'll get some more information on that Wednesday night, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thursday, remortality update with Senator McGuire's office. Then I have AAA, you're going to be there, in Ukiah. And then with NCO, we have a new tribal engagement committee with, with NCO. So I'll be in Ukiah for that. Also, back-to-back meetings there. Friday, I'm enrolled in a new CSAC course through the next few months. So I've got that for most of Friday. And then also a update with CSAC for the conference, planning for the AENR Policy Committee. And then Saturday, there's a CTA event at the Fainting Couch in Cobb, which is the newly reopened motel. And it's my fifth anniversary for being a CTA. So there is Fiddler's Jam on the 6th on Sunday, but I don't think I'll be able to go to that. And then on the 7th, I think I've got, oh, I've got my meeting with CAO Parker. And then are you missing Homecoming Week? You're traveling? Are you going to be back?
I'll be back for Homecoming. Just, just two days.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Because the night rally will be Monday night, and I will be there for that. And then back on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Crandall?
Yes. So speaking of Homecoming Week, in Upper Lake, it is Homecoming Week. And the parade will be tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. So tomorrow, I'll have the East Region Town Hall, CSA number two. So it looks like I'll be missing the Homecoming Parade. But, you know, got to be there. Thursday, AAA. I know I have another meeting with, I want to say, with Behavioral Health and some other folks for the planning, the grand opening for the apartment complex on Collier. Friday, I want to say that I'm probably going to have an office day, whether it be here or in Clear Lake Oaks, but I'll determine that. Sunday, One Team One Dream, Soper Reese, I'll be there as well. Monday, CAO meeting. And then Middle Creek Restoration Meeting. Does that sound about right?
Might need to talk.
All right. So back here on Tuesday next week.
Thank you very much. So just a reminder to everyone, in case you wanted to or had thought about doing it, today, I believe, is the last day to submit platform changes for CSAC. And so check out all the committees, check out all their platforms. If you feel that some of that is not touching some of the issues or some of the needs of Lake County, please go ahead and submit that by the end of the day. Apologize for only mentioning it today, but I have it on my calendar that it's our deadline is 5:00 p.m. today. Tomorrow, I am going to be joining Tribal Health in South County, in the city of Clear Lake. This is their second year of operation, and they're doing their Fall Festival. So I've been invited to be there. I believe I'm judging. No, that's for their Halloween, that I'll be judging their costume. So I'll just be hanging out for that one. Thursday, the judges breakfast. I've helped to organize a candidates forum for the council members that are candidates, or candidates to become council members. And so looking forward to that. And then Continuum of Care Performance Review is happening later on that day, meeting with Sutter Lakeside with Behavioral Health later on, that after, that morning. I have a NACO Health Steering Committee meeting happening. Looking forward to that conversation. And finishing up the day, at least for a meeting that I will be taking part in, rather than just attending the COC General Board meeting, and then finishing up with city council meeting later on that day. Friday, meeting with the city. And also later on, Congressman Thompson will be doing a town hall at the city of Clear Lake, starting at 12 to 2:00 p.m. on Friday. So I'll be joining that as well. On Sunday, I will be joining Vice Chair Crandall with the One Team One Dream. And I do have Middle Creek Project Committee. I just know that we haven't had a meeting at this point since there's been some staff changes. And so I think you and I should probably reach out to staff and just kind of check in to see, rather than expect. And then meeting with our CAO Parker to get ready for our meeting on Tuesday. And also I have a PEG Board meeting coming up that, later on that evening on Monday, the 7th. It'll be right here in Lakeport. And that is my calendar. And let's go ahead and go back to our agenda where we left off, and that was with item 7.4, consideration of the award of bid number 24-13 for the Lucerne Harbor Dredging Project in the amount of $211,700 to Mars Engineering. And Director Ewing?
Oh, yeah.
You didn't know who you were.
You don't want me in that.
Well, good morning. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. Yes, for your board's consideration is award of the bid for the Lucerne Harbor Dredging Project. In early August, Public Services solicited an invitation for bids for the project. We received two bids. And the, the board memo summarizes those as well, and the packet has those, has a bid tabulation. The, the information that's in the memo about the significant discrepancy is not commonly included in a, in a public project, at least for, for a recommendation for award. But in, in consideration of how drastically different they are, we wanted to ensure that your, your board was aware. Public Services was contacted by a labor organization with concerns for it, just to ensure that the, that Mars does, in fact, or will, in fact, be, be, first off, that their bid was based on prevailing wage, and that second, that they, they would, in fact, be, be paying prevailing wage, along with other labor laws that are required. So, so Public Services, I mean, I communicated directly with Mars to ensure that that was the basis for their bid, did confirm that they would be paying, paying prevailing wage. So with that confirmation, I'm recommending award to, to Mars Engineering.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Vice Chair Crandall?
Thank you, Lars, for bringing this long time, you know, a long time coming. And just appreciate the due diligence and looking forward to this project moving forward.
Any other comments? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Glad to be at this point also, Lars. Good job with it. Stay steadfast. No projects take a long time. I think I may be the only one when we first voted on this, when Jim Steele was still on the board, that we're getting this project done. So happy that it is getting done and we're at this point. So EJ and you guys just stay in admin, working through the, the issues we've had, but glad it's here today. So good job.
Thank you.
Takes time, we know.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I'm excited to see this too. But I did have just a couple of questions, if only because I think this can serve as a pathway for other dredging projects that we may need in the county, including in District Four. So just to clarify, it was a wide swing in the bids. And I went through the contract documents. So the company that's going to get this approved did conduct their own independent investigation of the, what's down there.
They were, in fact, the only, the only contractor that attended the non-mandatory pre-bid meeting. So I would, I would offer that they, they did more due diligence than, than the other, the other bidder. That's not to say that the, the other bidder did not do their own site walk, but, but they did not attend the, the non-mandatory, granted, but the, the pre-bid site walk with county staff.
Okay. Also, in the, in the paper trail here, I can see it did take a while. Took an initial study. I see there's a monitoring agreement with Robinson. And so all that stuff is very good, but complicates this process. So would you anticipate, and again, we're just here for this item, but there are, there have been other projects proposed elsewhere, too. Is this kind of a model? Does it, did this model work for you, or did it end up being kind of a, longer than anticipated, shall we say? Because I think it was originally scoped as Cat X.
It was, yes, it was. And that was part of the, to use this as a model, I think, is, is probably the lessons learned from this of what, of what not to do, at least with respect to, to the, putting out the request for review with a proposed categorical exemption. That, you know, that's not, not the way it should go. That here's, here's the project, and we need to evaluate it. So it's not abnormal to have tribal monitoring on, on projects. It's not abnormal to have archaeological monitoring above and beyond that, which is what we have in this case. So, so by and large, this is not a, it's not an overly complex project. It was the process, I would suggest, that, on this, that, that we can learn from. But I, I would stop short of saying that it, that it's a model. Every project is somewhat unique, but they're, they're certainly, certainly a process that community development follows, and they follow it very well. I appreciate their, you know, the, with, under Myria, and I think she, well, she was here when I walked up. But, but they've done a very good job of, in my opinion, of handling the, the request for reviews. But, but they've done a very good job of, in my opinion, of handling the, the requests for reviews. And, and if it gets to the point where there's the necessity for an initial study, they, they handled it very well. So I'm appreciative of, of, under, under her leadership, what, what is happening now.
Just in closing, this is going to be great for Lucerne. It's great to get boats in the harbor and interacting with the shore. And I just look forward to seeing this project moving forward very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to add, because I know that that was brought up and I want to make sure to note that during the timeframe, when this initiated, 19 was the initiation of the budget that was put together for the, the funding to get this project moving. 20, of course, COVID happened, 21 went through the Cat X. And then with the help of C O Parker, Director Lars Ewing and Tracy Klein, previous planning, she was the planner for this project. And then Robert Geary and Tomagio Anderson, plus Dr. Parker came. We went to the actual site and figured out a path forward, went to town halls, you know, continuously, got it into a different direction, went, went very well. There was some monitoring where they found a situation. And so the changeover also, I think that people, you know, there's a lot of misrepresentation or miscued thoughts that the county just kind of, no, there was changeover as well. So we've had, at that time, we had like two to three different directors for, for planning during the time. So it just, it was one of those things. And so we're here. Lars, thank you for being steadfast on this. And I think we're, we're in a good spot here. So I just wanted to highlight that, that that, you know, we've got, we've got where we're at because of all the help and due diligence of everybody, so, and the concern.
Thank you. No, I appreciate this, being here. I usually don't get excited in agenda review, but I know that I pointed this out. Thank you for bringing this. This is exciting. Anybody who's passed by, especially during the drought, could see the amount of buildup that's occurred within Lucerne Harbor. This is going to be great. It has been a long time coming. Hiccups happen unfortunately, and some of them are out of our control. But I'm glad we found the right pathway in order to get to this conclusion today. What I'm hoping, not to say again that it's a model option, but what I'm hoping is whatever initial study review that we've done can be reutilized for Lucerne Harbor again in the future. Because we know that the buildup of silt and sand and, and all kinds of soils is going to happen again in that area. And I'm hopeful that the study and what we have in documented materials will help us to redo this in the future when we have to dredge it again.
And if I could add a suggestion there, that it's really a suggestion that I can communicate with, with the Water Resources Director and, and even the two cities, which is on the maintenance dredging side of things. This is, you know, the first time that that harbor has ever been dredged since construction. So, so there is a, there's a pathway through, through permitting agencies, if it's truly maintenance dredging, if, if you have, if you continually perform this. So that's something that we can consider, as opposed to a, a one-time standalone project that, that requires non, non-maintenance dredging perspectives. So, so I'm happy to communicate that to, to those, to the directors, Water Resources and the two cities.
Right, because at the previous timeframe, there was no laws in place for cultural monitoring or anything like that. And so a lot of thoughts in the town and whatnot was, well, it wasn't done before. And Caltrans had found something in that area. And I'm sure that there's other areas when we move forward with different dredging projects that are going to be similar. So I think the concept that I think most education should take place is that when these were dredged or built, there was no cultural monitoring or, you know, AB 52 or Section 106 or anything like that. So it's, it's important to keep those things in mind, yeah.
And I appreciate the idea between project and maintenance in the sense that this is a, this has a potential for an economic impact. I would say there definitely is, but I don't have the proof right in front of me. And so having that maintenance, rather than waiting for it to rebuild to the point that we have it as today, currently, I think would be very helpful for the economy of the, the North Shore and things. So appreciate that this is in front of us and looking forward to this getting completed. Let's open it up for public comment. Please come on up.
Joan Moss. I remember that there was testing of mercury, for mercury and for cyanobacteria, around in a mine up there. And I'm wondering if, and there were dead cats. And there was a question whether the cats were from the carp that were infested with mercury. And I have, I have, I handed it into the water projects. Kelly combined everything that I wrote as a, as a public record attendee for the ground sustainable. And I will give it to Lars again. I have copies. And I want to make sure that the Environmental Impact Agency can report on the presence of possible mercury dash cyanobacteria in the area, in the fish and the cats that died. I have documents I'll give to Lars. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and bring that back and close public comment and bring it back to the board for action. Hold on, Supervisor Green, you have a comment?
I just wanted to bring it back. So Blue Ribbon Committee for the Rehabilitation at Clear Lake, there was a 2023 project to dredge other channels. But they did, they did do a call out. They did a shout out to Lucerne Dredging Project. So they did point out that among other benefits of this project, they're going to be taken out an estimated two tons of phosphorus and about 0.4 tons of nitrogen by dredging out that sediment. And that's roughly equivalent to 2% of the annual input of phosphorus for Clear Lake. So it may sound like just a little bit, but part of what we know about water quality in Clear Lake is there is a lot of phosphorus present, present in those deposited sediments. So this is probably not the best way to scrape the entire lake of phosphorus, but there is a tangible benefit that was called out at Blue Ribbon. So I appreciate that.
Awesome. Thank you. And looking for action.
So with that, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the award of bid number 24-13 for the Lucerne Harbor dredging project in the amount of $211,700 to Mars Engineering and authorize the chair to sign the agreement and the notice of award.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have completed all possible items at this moment. We have two timed items left, so we will take a recess and come back at 11:30 A. M. to take up item 6.8. All right, welcome back. We will take up our 6.8 item, 11:30 A. M. Consideration of Second Reading of Ordinance Amending Section 1.1. A of Ordinance Number 2945, Increasing the Charges and Fees for County Service Area Number Two, Spring Valley Lakes. And we have Director Borey.
Good morning, Board and Community and Staff. This item is a second reading to the ordinance that we went through the Prop 218 process for Spring Valley to increase the water rates. And this is the second reading of that ordinance. And so I don't know if there's public comment or if we want to request that we just read it in name only.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
I think I'll just, would just like to hear from the public first and then go in from there.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open up for public comment. Raise your hand if you're in Zoom or come on up to the microphone if you're in the chamber.
Hi. So I am here today to talk again about the proposed water rate hike for Spring Valley. I am sure that our advisory board had good intentions, but the community was not well informed about the process. The July meeting, scheduled for July 3rd, was moved to July 10th through a Facebook post. That post said that this meeting was informational and they would be discussing the water rate hike. There was no mention of a vote. There were about 12 people in attendance, give or take. A few pages of the rate study were shown to those in attendance. The 27-page report was not presented in full. A vote was taken and a small group approved this proposal. The full report was not made public, available to us until Friday, August 2nd. We received the 45-day letter from Special District in July. That letter outlined the rate increase and process for protesting this increase. The letter indicated that the CSA2 serves approximately 400 customers. At the August CSA2 meeting, many people attended and expressed their objections to this rate hike. At that meeting, the advisory board said they would not answer any questions from us in the audience. We downloaded the printed out and printed out the 27-page study, which not everyone has the capability to do. We then recognized several different numbers for the total number of customers. For the fiscal year 2324, the number of customers indicated was 410. For 2425, the study indicated that there were 419 customers. According to Prop 218, protest letters from over 50% of the customers is required to stop this proposal from proceeding. To date, we have submitted 215 certified protest letters, which is over 50% of the number of customers indicated in the letter or in the independent study. At that meeting, the board asked the head, at the last meeting, excuse me, the board asked the head of Special Districts about the total number of customers. You relied on her information to make your decision. The number she provided isn't even close to the number in the study or the letter. Prop 218 indicates that the number of customers needs to be specified clearly. In any, if any of the numbers in the study or in the letter are used, we have over 50% of our community protesting this. The whole process has been an eye-opener for me. It seems to have been biased at every turn. We were not well informed or represented. In addition, Special Districts seemed to make efforts to make sure that this passed and accurate information was presented to the Board of Supervisors and Residents. In addition, the number of customers.
If you can please finish your comments.
Was not accurate. I believe our community came together with an impressive fight. I hope you will consider this information, consult your legal counsel, and follow the legal responsibilities according to Prop 218.
If we can please get your name?
Lisa Sherrill.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have pamphlets for you guys to show with my exhibits. Each one of you guys have one. And I will be going down the line as I have it on my paper also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So by law of Prop 218, the governing body propositioning a 218 measure is required to clearly state the number of customers affected within a service area, as it is to, to determine whether a majority protest is done correctly. Exhibit A1, county letter states 400 customers. Exhibit A2 is from the study, page 6, 2.2 Rate Revenue State Roughly 420. Exhibit A3, from the study, Table 3, Financial Year, states 410 customers. Those are hard numbers. Exhibit A4, from the study, page 19, 5.3 Fixed Meter Charge Rate calculation is divided by 419 customers, also hard numbers. Exhibit A5, from the study, Table 12, shows all five years is 419 customers. Those are hard numbers. Exhibit B, from the study, Table 15, Bi-Monthly at Various Levels of Use, Financial Year 2425, on record from Robin, stated on the September 10th hearing that she did a deep study into the water usage as she found 68 customers were using 100,000 gallons in a bi-monthly period. I did the math with Robin's numbers. Those 68 customers are using 133.689 CCFs in a bi-monthly. So 352 customers will be paying for those 68 extremely high-use customers, as you see in the table presented in front of you. I also have concerns with Robin stating on record from the September 10th hearing, if Prop 218 did not pass, she would come back using an emergency order. I feel that is an abuse of power that Robin will be using towards Spring Valley community. I would also like my evidence to be put on record to show that Spring Valley customers accomplished and stopped this Prop 218 by the numbers that were put together by the consultants of the study, the hard numbers. The study shows 419 customers. Numbers of protest turned in is 215. Prop 218, we needed 50 plus one. By the hard numbers, by the study, 419. We, as a community, got 215 protests, which is 50% plus four. Also, Robin should be fining those 68 high users by state law. Exhibit C1, also, the study was finalized on 7/30/24. If you see Exhibit 2 that I sent you, the notice of public hearing was mailed on 7/26. By law, the study has to be finalized before mailing a public hearing. So I please hope that you guys look at what I gave you. I did go into deep. I did look into Prop 218. And we have done everything we're supposed to. She moved the field goal on us. She should have had the numbers on the public hearing. It should have said about 500 and not about 400. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Please come on up. Carolyn, we have.
I have copies. You want me to just leave them here?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. I am still Helen Mitchum, like I was last time. I'm here hoping to find some sort of maybe serendipity or divine intervention or something that might cause at least two of you to reconsider the vote that you took, that you did last week. A good portion of our community understands that rates need to be increased or adjusted. I just believe some folks see the proposed measure as a hardship, especially on those who are on fixed incomes. We're not a wealthy community and have in fact, received a few grants specifically based on that fact. Like many areas in the county, we've been hit hard by wildfires, three in the last five years. And there are fewer customers today than there were in 2021. We had 427 then, we're down to 409. Because lots of homes were lost and people just didn't come back. Our financials show a surplus one year and a deficit the next. It's kind of like a bouncing ball, just which way you're going to look at it. I've attached to the package, you have three samples of financial information that was provided to the Finance Committee on the Advisory Board by Special Districts that show this fact. You've heard about the 120 or so customers using over 100,000 gallons of water each year? How about that one person who's using over 400,000? Can we really say those high users aren't responsible for increased pumping and treatment costs, much more than the normal user? What is a normal user, anyway? According to the Department of Water Resources in conscious, in Conservation Conscious California, wow, I knew that was going to be tough to say. A family of two uses about 96 gallons a day. There's, that's a little less than four CCF a month. And this proposal expects that over two months, or allows that over two months. We don't expect to have lush green lawns, but we should be able to have a small garden, maybe some vegetables. And then there's that orchid that my friend gave me that I'm trying to keep alive inside my house. It's the only thing that is living in there of green nature. I believe the changes to the water rates that should have been included in this 218 are many. We're going to miss the opportunity to consider those changes if we don't make them now. If the basic rate is increased, why not standby fees? Are standby fees, should they be treated differently? There are some 90 accounts that could be standby status, but we're not quite sure about that. And an untapped resource for revenue. I believe the proposition was rushed through without sufficient consideration and discussion of additional sources of revenue and how expenses might be reduced by. and how expenses might be reduced by reviewing procedures and policies for unrealized savings. I hope I've caused you to think about this proposal from a little bit different perspective. Maybe see it from Spring Valley's position. We always think we're unique. I'll bet you guys do, too. So as the saying goes, walk a mile in Spring Valley shoes. Maybe that's a little different than the norm, but walk a mile there, anyway. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comments. Please come on up.
My name is Cindy Stores. I live in Spring Valley. I also serve on the CSA Board. I want to elaborate just a tad bit more on some of the things that Helen lifted up. So as someone who sits on the Finance Committee on the CSA Board, I can tell you, if you don't already know, that budget is broken. For several years ago, after it fluctuating, it became clear that it was costing $45,000 roughly, somewhere between $40,000 and $45,000 a year to keep the water system running, beyond water paying for water. Water was no longer paying for water. So that's two years where Special Districts has had to grab money from anywhere they could out of our tax base in order to provide water. There are 19 other items in this ordinance that simply exist and exist in exactly the same format as they did in 2011. There's no change in the number of them. There's no change in their amounts. There is no change that indicates that indeed they were increased over these years for cost of living. None of that has happened. We have been asking for some conversation about a pretty significant item in that, the installation of a new meter and what that does to people who want to build out in Spring Valley. Does it encourage or discourage? And is it really necessary to go into the capital improvement fund when it was originally instigated to pay for a water system that was then paid for by grants? Those 19 items, even if they were increased for inflation, they're not going to total $45,000. But they seem to me to indicate that there are many areas in this ordinance that need to be looked at, that need to be fine-tuned. And I am hoping that the Board will continue to work with us and Special Districts, that we can put together something that allows for water to pay for water that addresses those issues structurally and financially in Special Districts in Spring Valley. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? We have a comment on Zoom, Andrew Kirkendall.
Yes, is it working?
Yes.
Okay, first off, thank you Board of Supervisors for dealing with issues as this. I know it's very stressful. I've learned quite a bit regarding on Prop 218. But as our other residents have stated, Prop 218, in our opinion, clearly fails to provide the, provide the, um, sure, I'm sorry, I'm going, uh, the numbers, provide the numbers. We are getting a vague rate of this 400 single-family residence. And we don't know the difference between land or if it's not land or if it's off. On our property taxes, it will clearly state it's a vacant parcel, not a single-family residence. And so just based on that, I just don't think Prop 218 was clearly, on Special District's part, it wasn't clearly demonstrated the base and cost of the rate increase. And for that, we should be going back to the drawing board to figure out a solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Joan, come on up, please.
Joan Moss, I'm a journalist. I'm old, half-deaf. But I wanted to say that Bruno had promised us the week following the first protest hearing that we would talk about it. And now we're talking about it. Meanwhile, this lady who runs the department was having two agenda items that dealt with the other people who were dealing with rate increases. And I misunderstood her. She said, "We took a vote and they all voted against it." And I misunderstood that. I thought she was talking about this group. I'm a member, I'm still a member of the public. Maybe a little bit outspoken sometimes. But I do believe that I didn't understand what Bruno had said. And I didn't understand her report about how they voted, but they didn't vote the way these people had a protest. They voted and they accepted. So I just don't understand why it can't be clear-cut and, and everybody has a right to speak and everybody has a right to speak up. We all have our rights. And these people, they have a right to talk. And the Advisory Committee has a right to talk. And people have their rights to find a lawyer and to sue if they think they're being mistreated. I do spend a lot of time on the fourth floor watching the lawsuits. There are things I don't understand that happen in the courts. But I have a right to say, "I don't understand what's happening here." We stand and we pledge with liberty and justice for all. We say that every morning when we start this meeting. And that's what we all have a right to have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Not sure what promise you're speaking of, but we had a meeting. Maybe you weren't attending that meeting. That was a week ago? Has it already been a week? It feels like much longer. Where we heard a lot of comments from the audience and no one was restricted on what they could say or how they could say it. We made sure to listen to everyone and a decision was made. Maybe it's not the decision that everybody wanted, but I'm not quite sure what you mean, that I promised a discussion that we never had. So I'm as confused as you are at this moment in time because I thought we had a very deep discussion with Spring Valley last time that this came to the Board. So let's go ahead and move on. If there's no further comment, let's go ahead and close public input. And any comments from or questions regarding this item from Supervisors?
Did you want to allow staff to answer or comment or?
Yes, let's go ahead unless there's specific questions that you want to make sure that we get
No, I was just, if they wanted to address anything that's been said or if they just, you know.
Well, I would like to clarify for the record that the 120-some users out there are using 100,000-plus gallons per year, not bimonthly. So that's an annual number. And we went in-depth as to how many connections were out there and how many rate payers and how the standby accounts factored into that. And we do have 497 accounts.
497.
It's 497, right? Oh, it's 499, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions we want to make sure to cover? I know there was a question about timelines of submissions of the public hearing letter versus the final report. Any comments on what those timelines are supposed? I don't see anything in the text of Prop 218 that specifies the timelines that are needed for that. We had a final report on July 30. It was sent out on July 24. Just wondering if you can comment on that.
That's one of the reasons we hire a consultant to help us with this, to ensure that we follow Prop 218 to the T. And we've talked to, legal has weighed in on some of this process as well. And we have followed Prop 218 according to all the timelines and when notices needed to go out and all of that.
I think she was first. Yeah, no, I'm, you know, I'm still in the same stance I was in before. And I also, you know, I didn't, I had the letter and it says 400 residential can, provides water service to about in a way that I can understand why, why folks would think, you know, that, that that would be the amount, the threshold. And so, yeah, there's the numbers here and there. You know, it just gives, it gives a little confusion. And so for me, I still, I feel like, you know, the protest, the numbers that were intact, I feel like they were legitimate. The numbers were differentiated here and there. So I just, I still take the same stance I was in. And that is to, I don't support this initiative, this ordinance or moving it forward. So, yeah, I would really like to find a way to, you know, kind of like what we discussed earlier in the long process of the harbor situation. You know, there's transition, there's, you know, so I feel like at times if there's a way to halt, get on the same page and move forward, it's important.
Supervisor Spieska?
Yeah, I think, you know, based on some of the comments today, the thing that we haven't been talking about really directly is that we have heavy users that are impacting this entire system. And it's likely coming from unlicensed cannabis. It is illegal to use treated water for this purpose. And so these folks that are using 100,000 gallons, 400,000 gallons, are there higher users than that? Like, that's a crazy amount of water. And the CSA shouldn't be responsible to provide that water to illicit users. So there could be other things that we could do with code enforcement and cracking down on those users in the area because ultimately if those users stop taking advantage of the system, they're the ones that are putting this hardship on everybody. It is. But, but we have fulfilled this process. And this is the cost of water to be delivered in this, with it, for the system. There isn't anything that we can do about that. So I, you know, I think that's another conversation with code enforcement and law enforcement for another day. So I guess I'll just end it at that.
Okay, Supervisor Green?
I agree, if there's going to be a discussion about whether illegal activities are happening out there, that is a discussion for another day. That's not relevant to today's discussion. I just wanted to ask Special Districts or County Council, just to clarify one last time. The language in Prop 218, I assume they're defined terms. But I'm looking at the notice that went out to a property owner. But Prop 218 also refers to rate payers. And it sounds like there's a whole bunch of connections out there that may be property owners but not actually paying rates at this point because they're not hooked up. So, and there was a fresh discussion about the number of protest votes received and those, the larger number of rate payers or property owners, whatever term you're using, that would set the baseline for whether the protest votes reach the 50% threshold. So really to me, and thank you, Journalist Joan, for pointing out a litigation possibility. But my question is, it sounds like we've checked all the checkboxes on 218, but I'm a little fuzzy still on the property owner, rate payer distinction, if there is one. And I just want to make sure we lock in that final number, like as of today, when we pass this ordinance, what's that number of connections or property owners or rate payers, whatever that term is, against which we weigh the protest vote.
So we sent the notices to the property owners that have water connections or that means that they're either using water or they have a connection that they could turn on at any point. So the standby accounts, they're all rate payers because they're all paying a fee. And so per Prop 218, that's where we sent them to the property owners and have followed that.
So that a tenant of a rented property that actually pays the water bill or indirectly pays the water, they don't have rate payer status under
They didn't, they would not have received a notice. We sent it to property owners per Prop 218.
All right, thank you.
Well, and it's just important to note that if you had everybody, all 499, using water and paying for water, it will also bring everybody's rates down, the more users that you have. But you still have a service, which means you're still going to be impacted if there's a change. You can turn the water on, you just aren't using it currently when you're on standby.
And I think most of those had houses at one point and then were lost in the fire or is, and still in the process of rebuilding or determining what they're going to do.
Right, which again is the same thing that we have been experiencing in the Cobb areas. When you lose all those users, it really, it really affects the other users.
So, oh, Vice Chair Crandall?
Just real quick and just back to that statement on the CSA2, Spring Valley Water provides water service to about 400 residential connections. And then I think last time I asked if there were the, the folks that bought their meters included in that 400 that's stated in the front page? Because when it was, when it was sent out, it said there was 500. So is that to, that's to the properties? But was the 400 residential connections, that's including the folks that have a meter as well, that bought a meter?
The 400 meters are 400 and change meters are those that are actually having water distributed to them so they get a monthly bill for water usage. And so they have at least one gallon of water. The standby accounts are also part of that 499 number. And they get a bill for the standby account, but they are not actually using water. And so that's where Prop 218 gets really, really confusing and really complex. And that's why we use professionals that that's all they do is Prop 218. Because when you figure out rates, you have to base it on those that are using water. You can't say, "Oh, well, we're going to get so much from connection fees and so much from all these other miscellaneous fees" because it has to be based on water use. And so that's why the rates fluctuate with the number. And some of those calculations come out a little different. But when the Prop 218 process goes out, it's to all property owners that have a connection, which encounters the standby.
So a couple of comments. I've been looking at, I think there was some confusion at first when we talked about the high utilizers. At one point, we decided to divide it by 12 because it was for the whole year, not on a bimonthly basis. When you look at a whole year's worth of water usage, I don't mean to say it's not much, but 100,000 gallons doesn't do all that much. If you have a four-person home that utilizes water on a daily for cooking, for washing, for all of those necessary hygienes, and maybe they have a small personal garden. I'm expending over, what did I just calculate? Close to 100 CCFs, just in my small garden that I have, vegetable garden. I do not grow cannabis. So I don't think we should identify those who use just over 100,000 as obvious cannabis growers. I think it would be a whole lot more than that. I would suspect it's a whole lot more than that. And the 100,000 gallons is 133 CCFs when I do the calculations. And so I'm at 106, 107. And I don't even know that I calculated a full year. I only see what I see on my water consumption based on the website I went to. And so I, I mentioned it last time. I struggle that if 25% of the households that have use are being thrown out for the average, I struggle that as being called outliers when I think I would identify myself within potentially close to being in those outliers. And I know I don't misuse water. But at the same time, that doesn't change the fact that it would just rearrange the numbers so that you can still get the revenue needed in order to run the system. It just wouldn't say yes to what those specific numbers are. It would change what the average is and things would move around. what the average is, and things would move around. Maybe it would be, I, it would change potentially the base rate with extending it to zero to more than four. But it would still have to be paid for. It wouldn't give you free water or anything like that. Again, I'm not going to make up numbers because I don't want to put ideas in people's minds of what that should be. I do see in there that it did say about 400. We're actually closer to about 500. So that wasn't necessarily accurate. I'm looking at the Prop 218 text as it is. There might be guidelines. But the text is what the text is, and that's what the law has to be based off of. And I don't see very specific things inside there of what was brought to us today related to timelines. And it's been reviewed by county council. I, I, I struggled with this one last time, and I'm struggling with it today. And I get it, the whole process brought to you by the request of CSA number two, not in support from CSA number two. But these are things that we are obviously doing for other districts and doing for this district because we have to keep up with what is the true cost of getting it there, or else eventually nothing is getting there. I'm still struggling with this one. I, I don't know that it's the appropriate numbers. But again, the appropriate numbers, I don't think would make people happy either, because eventually the system has to pay for itself. But I, I would like to see if it's 400,000 gallons, that those are outliers. But I just, some of these other numbers, it makes no sense to me that the average, I believe you mentioned was three CCFs. In the report, it says it's nine during the wintertime and 21 or something like that. I'm, I'm trying to recollect what the study said. But then you mentioned that there's those that are high users that were taken out, and therefore it dropped the average to the new number. But that number, when I'm looking at the average use per person of 55 gallons per day, seems really, really easy to exceed in a household of more than one individual.
Well, the entire point of including water was so that they're prepaying for water. And so normally, the base rate is just to have a connection so that you can turn your faucet on. And then you pay consumer units on every drop of water that comes out of your faucet. The recommendation was to include four consumer units, which everyone out there seems to use at least four consumer units. So they're not paying, prepaying for water that they aren't using, and then, you know, supplementing somebody else that's using much more water. And so that's where the tiers come in on how much it is to produce, you know, up to a certain amount of water. And then the higher tiers cost a little bit more. But the whole point is that they're paying for the water they're using. And if everybody had 12 C consumer units like they did before, there were a lot of people pay, prepaying for water that they would never use. And so it fluctuates the, depending on how much it is. There's some people that use less than 1,000 gallons of water every other month. And there's others that use 50, 60, 70,000 gallons a month, every other month. So those were annual averages. And we didn't throw anybody's numbers out. It's just, we recognize that there's a lot, like, there, like, those 100 people are using about 42% of the total water. And there's others that are very frugal with their water and don't use, you know, their, their annual average is less than 30,000 gallons. So on average, you know, it's probably about 50,000 gallons per house. But that includes, you know, those high users as well, that are pulling those others that don't use hardly any water up. So it was just an analysis to look and see, you know, how much water's being used and...
And, and as I said, in the long run, if it does have to change, it's still going to be the same, to get the same total revenue needed to run the system, it would just shift things around, whether it's the base pay or the per, per CCF rates.
Well, and the base is the base. And then it's so much per consumer unit. So the base includes four consumer units. So we added four consumer units to the base to come up with the new rates.
So, so I do have a question. Since, since we said about 400 on what was submitted, and since we're now saying 499, and since we have 40% plus of a protest vote, I guess I, I would like to make a request that we get a list to show the active list that we have, so that we can at least prove and 100% say this is less than 50%. They're bringing it up. I think let's, let's show them the proof. And that's what I would make the request to. And say, let's go ahead and make sure that that's made transparent, so that it's obvious to the public that we did not meet the 50% threshold.
And so we'll have to redact some personal information on there. So that'll take some time. But we can definitely, we can bring it back to the board, or send it to the advisory board, whichever you would prefer.
Well, I think that can just be available if anyone wants to, if we, if you provide that report, anyone can just come and see it. They can pick it up, they can take it to their advisory board. But I, we need to move forward with this. I, I don't want to push this off again. We've done all of the work. We've had a lot of meetings. We've given this a lot of time. And we need to move forward.
And I'm looking at-
Yeah, I agree with you. If we could determine which letters that were protested to match the users and the, or, I, I mean, again, the 400 or the 490, I'm not sure. But, yeah. Because on one hand, it could be more than 50%. And on the other, it could be 40%. So that's why I agree with you to look at that.
But there is clearly 499 active users. And so the protest was 250. Standby counts. And so we have went all, over all of those numbers. The difference that Jesse and I were talking about were the, was the production meter. And, you know, our meters that don't count, they aren't delivering water. They're just calculating how much water's going through the system. So.
And I appreciate the time that's been spent on this. And, and I appreciate the objections to this from District 3 Supervisor in our last vote. And I think that we are missing one piece of transparency that I think would really help and, and help us move forward. And so I, I'm not looking to put a wall on this where it doesn't move forward. I just think that with the effort made by the community and the voice of District 3 Supervisor, I'd love to support that extra level of transparency to show, here's our, all of our active current users. And that way, we can see the total rather than just hear a number or see a number that says about 400. And right now, we've been hearing things. But I think it's always good to see things and show, share the documentation to support those things. And I apologize for not asking for that earlier. But I just want to make sure that we're, we're not choosing one side over the other of what words we want to take, that we have documentation to show exactly why it is that we're choosing to move forward in one direction. Supervisor Green?
I'm going to follow up on my prior question, if there's a distinction between rate payer and property owner. If only because the only notices that went out were to the property owner. But looking at the section of the Constitution that addresses this, there is a definition. And "property ownership," quote unquote, shall be deemed to include tenancies of real property where the tenants are directly liable to pay the assessment fee or charge in question. So for those renters out there who are paying the bill, and potentially on special districts' role as the rate payer, without some comparison of the names of the people actually paying the water bills against those who own the property, I can't necessarily accept the assertion that noticing is proper when it's only sent out to the property owners of record on a grant deed. If there's no consideration of whether rate payers are directly liable to pay the assessment or the water charges in question here, then the question of notice being adequate is raised in my mind. Granted, I cannot imagine the difficulty that may come with attempting to parse who actually owns a proper, property and pays the water bill versus a tenant. But it's in there. The language is in there. So if the California Constitution and Prop 218 takes care to define property ownership to the point that we should be noticing tenants who actually pay the water bills, then I have a question about whether notice was adequate. And unfortunately, that same question may precede other 218 hearings. So I don't want to unpack a can of worms. But they have very clearly raised concerns about proper notice. And I'm a process guy. So I want to make sure every opportunity has been given at notices. And I'll just leave it at that for now. If there's any comments from special districts or county council on that particular clause of 218, I'd be interested to hear that.
County Council?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, starting point, or at least a starting point, would be Article 13D, Section 6, Sub A1, the California Constitution, which does provide for noticing requirements, at least to a certain degree, where it states, I quote, "Parcels upon which a fee or charge is proposed for imposition shall be identified under this Prop 218 process." The amount of the fee, I'll continue with that quote, "The amount of the fee or charge proposed to be imposed upon each parcel shall be calculated. The agency shall provide written notice by mail of the proposed fee or charge to the record owner of each identified parcel upon which the fee or charge is proposed for imposition." So the, the term used under that section in the California Constitution for noticing purposes is record owner. We turn to, essentially, that would be, Article 4.6, Chapter 4, Part 1, Division 2, Title 5 of the Government Code, which is the Proposition, Proposition 218 Omnibus Implementation Act, which it defines record owner under Section 53750J as an owner of a parcel whose name and address appears on the last equalized secured property tax assessment roll, or in the case of any public entity, the state of California or the United States, means the representative of that public entity at the address of that entity known to the agency. You also have, under that same article, 4.6, further noticing requirements under Section 53755, or rather, the protest submission requirements in which, under Sub B of 53755, it states that one written protest per parcel filed by an owner or tenant of the parcel shall be counted in calculating a majority protest to a proposed new or increased fee or charge subject to the requirements of Section 6 of Article 13D of the California Constitution.
So with that, were there tenants that submitted letters that were not counted?
I do not know. Johanna is the one that counted the, the protests. We do have rate payers that are tenants. And so we would have to check with Johanna. But I do not believe she threw people out for being a renter versus a property owner unless we got multiple for, we did get, you know, sometimes there were parcels where we got five or six votes. And so obviously, we would take the property owner, registered property owner's vote over that versus multiple. And there would only be one vote per parcel. So I think that's where the majority of them that were thrown out were, were just the duplicate kind of thing. Or people that weren't even in Spring Valley in any way, they weren't rate payers or property owners. There were some people that were previous tenants, or people that were from surrounding areas that were not actually Spring Valley residents.
I think also, I know a lot of the questions that came from the public was if tenants that were renting could submit letters. And I think that they did not submit it because they were told that it had to be the property owner. And so for that, like, that adds to my concern about the Spanish, you know, notification. And, you know, and of course, the, the letter that expresses the 400, it, that's what gives me still the stance that I have as well. Because you're talking about possibly more protest letters that could have came in and obtained the threshold of the 2, or the 50% plus one.
Thank you for all the comments. I'm, I'm gonna maybe make it even muddier here. So something just happened within the district I serve that was decided by the courts. And I'm reading this language. And I'd like for county council to either look to see at a later time to provide us your reading on this. But it says here on Section 4 of the Prop 218 text, I don't know what section it is, Article 8D, Section 4, Procedures and Requirements for All Assessments. Subsection A reads, "An agency which proposes to le, so proposes to levy an assessment shall identify all parcels which will have a special benefit conferred upon them." Does that have to be a rate payer? Or is it all possible parcels that could potentially eventually get a connection and have to pay those rates? Because it's what will be conferred upon them. And if they make a connection, it will be conferred upon them. And that was a decision that was made by our courts upstairs just earlier, two, three weeks ago, that all parcels within a district shall be identified. It's a separate situation. But I'm just kind of curious if it follows along with Prop 218, since there's potential for future rate payers to be impacted by decisions we make today. And obviously, the wrench in the wheel I'm throwing in is that it would be more than 499 at this point. It would be all parcels, not just users.
So if the reference there is California Constitution, Article 13D, Section 4, I believe, that specifically, I believe that specifically relates to assessments as to, in contrast with fees or property-related fees. And that would be, that mainly is addressed under Section 6. So Section 4 would be Procedures and Requirements for Assessments, although admittedly, under a, under the caption, at least, it would be Assessment of Property-Related Fee Reform. But mainly, as I read it, the procedures under Section 4 primarily apply to assessments, whereas Section 6 would be the procedures pertaining to property-related fees and charges. Which, as I understand it, and Special District Administrator, Bori, may confirm this or not. But I think that's what we were working under in retaining that consultant for purposes of the, of the, what's being proposed under this ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I, I'm, I'm still curious as to how that would be interpreted. Because again, I'm reading Section 6, and I, I feel it reads the same, because it's proposed for imposition. It's not saying current users, anywhere in the text that I can see, it would be for future imposition of fees. And so, I, just something to think about, because it could potentially expand that number to more parcels that are currently not, what was the term that you used for those that know, the ones that are standby? Right now, we have current users, and we have standby. But then we also have vacant parcels that are still within the district that have not done a standby connection or anything of the kind. Anyways, I, I just, i, if we can get some clarity on that, if this item comes back, which at this moment in time, it appears that that may be the case. But I'm, I'm still, I, I think that I would still like to see that list just again, so we can create a little level of transparency. There's some questions about the numbers. Let's not have that question. Let's go ahead and provide that is what I would like to request. And it seems that Vice Chair Crandall concurs with that. Any other comments or questions?
Ready to move forward.
And so what I would like to ask is, County Council, how do we not throw this to reset? Can we do a motion to continue this, so that that information could be brought back to us? And that way, we can continue. Vice Chair?
Yeah. So before you do that, just for procedural purposes, I would like to rescind the ordinance due to the confusion of the Prop 218 process. the ordinance due to the confusion of the Prop 218 process, which I know will probably die, but I'm doing it for the formality.
So at this moment, we have a motion on the floor to rescind this process?
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
I'll second for the point of discussion.
Okay. Any discussion?
You know, it is a Hobson choice. Short of passing this, it does put the district in a bind such that special districts will be forced to do some that may be even less palatable. But the, you know, I have to look at the case of tenants who may act as de facto property owners and the fact they're actually paying the bill, and yet they've been deprived, potentially through inadequate noticing, of their ability to protest the bill, protest the rate increase. And I get that there may be other parts of Prop 218 that say, direct notice to rate-paying tenants is not required, but if it's not in there, let's find a way to apply that. The notion that a resident, especially someone who didn't get notice or didn't get notice in adequate language, is going to get these big chunky rate increases and is only hearing about it by the by through an absentee landowner or through their neighbors that have taken, paid attention to this, kind of strikes me as patently unfair. Would it have changed the outcome of this? I don't know that for a fact. But is it such a concern on the process that, you know, what's the greater harm, delaying this, doing a possible reboot, or actually figuring out who a ratepayer is and distinguishing between that and a potential absentee property owner? So that would be my argument for not moving forward and supporting a reboot.
Or rescinding of the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comment?
Yeah, so just want to clarify one more time whether, I guess there's confusion, but there's only one vote per parcel, right? One vote per parcel.
One vote per parcel.
Which is most likely going to be the owner, because they own the property, which most likely is going to be the owner.
Correct.
But clarify again, one vote?
One vote per parcel.
And I believe that the argument being made, and I disagree with the rescinding at this moment in time, I prefer getting further information than having to hit reboot. But I believe the argument being made is if tenants had been told otherwise that they could submit a protest vote, that maybe the outcome would be different than the 40% that we received. Am I correct in my analysis of that? Supervisor Green?
Well, that, and again, defective notice makes the whole process, taints the whole process. But say only one vote can be counted per parcel. Well, if I were counting the ballots, I would take the vote of the person actually paying the bill versus the property owner. And it looks like property ownership is distinguished within this section of the Constitution to allow that. So if there's been no, not even a nod to the fact who's actually paying the bill for this water, to the point, we can argue about whether it changes the outcome, but the larger point is they were deprived of their due process. They were not given a right to protest, and they have standing to do that. Now, even if there's only one vote per parcel, you guys can go Rochambeau over who gets counted. You may say, well, the property owner always wins that. But for me, we're arguing about an assessment, and the ratepayer as distinguished in Prop 218, that can include a tenant who actually pays the bill. That person deserves notice.
Supervisor Pyska?
I'm sorry. This is a process that we have been using for all of our districts, and this conversation never came up in the other ones, and we need to move forward. It is difficult, yes. This is hard, yes. But we have to move forward. It's not going to change the outcome, and we can't just kick the can. So this is, I don't, like, I don't even know how to respond to that. Supervisor Green?
Well, I'll respond, inadequate notice was not alleged in the other 218 hearings.
It is the same process. We have followed the same process.
So at this moment in time, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and bring this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
Nay. And I believe that with a three to two, that actually would cancel the moving forward. Am I correct on that? Because we need a four vote, a four-person vote to move forward with the second reading. Is it the same to rescind?
Yeah, I think you need four, right? Oh, no, that's for emergency.
What is, with a three to two, I believe that the Prop 218 requires a four-person vote in order to move forward. Does it require a four-person vote to rescind?
We'll have to look at that if we can just take a recess.
Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 12:40. Thank you very much. I wanted to bring this back to our last question that we took a break for and want to go back to County Council as far as what voting threshold we need in order to move any of this forward.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. So for the motion that's before your board that was seconded and a vote was called, which is the motion to rescind the ordinance, that would only require a majority vote, so at least three out of the five. And I believe since vote, the vote has been taken for that, under that motion, just to clarify for the record, because a roll call wasn't made, I believe it was two votes for, four in favor of the rescission of the ordinance and three votes against the rescission of the ordinance.
And therefore, the vote does not pass?
Correct.
And if there was a motion to be placed for a second reading to move forward, that would also require just a simple majority vote of a three to two at minimum in order for that to pass, correct?
Correct. And with that motion, since what's before your board today is the ordinance itself, the motion can be taken by a roll call, which would be offering the ordinance or vote.
Okay. I just wanted to get clarification on that. Thank you very much. And bringing it back to the board.
I'll offer the ordinance.
The ordinance has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Crandall?
No.
Green?
No.
Pyska?
Yes.
Sabatier?
Nay. What I would like to offer is that we continue this item, bring back some items that, I'm looking for consensus, bring back items that I've requested, the list of active ratepayers slash standby to prove the 499, since that number has moved a little bit since the final, since the notifications have been sent out, just to show again that we have not breached the 50% of the protest vote that we have received thus far.
So that would be an information item, right? Because this is a dead item now, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so just for clarification, in light of the ordinance not being adopted and the second reading not moving forward, the ordinance was not adopted. So what's left for your board, as far as direction, there would not be, unless things start again with a resubmission, going through the restarting of the Prop 218 process, that would be the option, that would be the scenario that we're looking at here in light of the ordinance not moving forward. That is to be contrasted with continuing. And there was some mention of that, a continuance of the second reading of the ordinance, which would have continued to a date and time certain pending board direction to staff. But as it stands right now, unless there's another motion before your board, the ordinance did not pass.
Which still gives us the opportunity to make a motion to continue and reverse the previous vote that was just made.
Yes, that is a motion that could be your board that has happened in prior instances, where your board can rescind the offering or the action that was taken from the offering of the ordinance.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
But a motion to reconsider takes four votes, right?
We didn't ask that one.
I don't believe a motion to reconsider a board action would necessarily require a four-fifth vote, I mean.
I thought we had a prior items. Okay, I'm sorry. Were you trying to, you weren't trying to kill it entirely?
I would prefer that we not kill it entirely. I think that we can provide more information, because right now, again, I have numbers that are being told to me, but I don't see anything to support those numbers. And a number that was provided to the public saying you have the right to protest, and that number is not close to what the true number is that we're being told it is. And I think that the public who have protested, who have provided 40% or more, should be provided with that documentation. We should be provided with that documentation. And I think that a pause of one week to bring this back is not a deadly sin for us to commit that, to make sure that there's that level of transparency with the public.
So I think I heard a procedural boo-boo there, but it sounds like there's latitude. If a motion to reconsider can be made and it doesn't require a four-fifth vote, then I won't be making that motion, but somebody else could.
So one option for your board would be to take that up for consideration. The consideration before your board would be, at your board's option, to, for a motion to rescind the, essentially, the non-adoption of the ordinance coming out of the previous vote. There would have to be public comment on that as well. And then bringing it back to your board for that specific motion, which would then bring this item 6.8 before your board again for another motion, a subsequent one.
Well, I'll step out of character, and I'll make a motion to rescind our prior vote.
Correct. And for clarification, that would be the rescission of the vote to not adopt the ordinance.
The second reading.
Correct, the second reading.
Just for procedure clarification, if you're going to make a motion, you've got to, doesn't he have to turn it over to the vice chair to make that motion, or no? That's what I've experienced on the board.
I think that would be under Chapter 1. And then public comment will also need to be made before the actual motion proceed.
A motion and a second, and then open up for public?
Or actually, that would be before, prior to the motion and a second, the public comment.
Open it up for public comment.
So I've listened to what Robbins had to say to you guys when you asked your questions. I am being advised by an attorney. I was told to come here and present this paperwork to you guys.
This public comment is on whether or not to rescind this.
And this is going to be my point of why you shouldn't rescind it, okay? So thank you. Okay, so my thing is, is I've already been advised by an attorney. I was told to bring you these things because of what we have done, we have followed Prop 218. And you might have made a boo-boo or whatever, but by the evidence that I have presented to you guys, this should have been shut down by most of, pretty much all of you guys, because by Prop 218, like you said it last week, Moe, we need to go by it. And this community went by it. And by the three of you guys stopping it, I agree 100%. I think we need to go back to the board. I think it needs to be shut down, because 68 of these customers are using 40% of this water, and the 300 and other customers are paying for the high usage of these people.
Let's get back to whether or not we rescind.
I'm going to finish. Okay, and this is why I'm requesting for you not to rescind it, because now that is going to make them have to go back to the drawing board and come up with the actual numbers and be transparent with the community that they're trying to pass this on. This is why I'm asking you not to rescind it.
Thank you. Any other comment? I see none in the chambers, none in the Zoom room, and bringing it back. And County Council, is that enough time for you to?
What I found on Chapter 1 of the county's policies and procedures is that your board does have a custom of granting the district supervisor the privilege of making the initial motion on planning applications and appeals that originate in his or her district. And should that initial motion fail, the floor is open for alternate motions. So it seems to be a custom, but not mandatory.
And so I still make a motion to rescind our last action.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any oppose?
Nay.
Okay. Then I guess this restarts the process since we are not bringing it back.
Starts in the sense that now it is up for your board. The item is still open for your board's discussion. As far as the second reading, now, there was some discussion by your board of possibly...
Didn't pass. It didn't pass.
It was a two to three.
Oh, two to three, I'm sorry.
So the 219 process starts.
Sorry, I didn't hear the...
And the cost is borne on this.
Yeah.
It's borne by the, but it's borne by the CSA.
Right.
At this moment, the decision was made. I don't think there's any further discussion at this point in time. And, okay. We will see how we move forward with that. Thank you very much. And so I did see that we have our undersheriff that came in. We have not taken our lunch break at this moment in time. I do want to check in with the board. Do we want to wait and move on with item 6.9 or take a lunch? 6.9 is our last item.
How long do you think it's going to be?
It's a timed, well, we would take it at 1:00. And I don't think, it's just a discussion, there's no vote, so I think it's a whole lot easier than what we just went through right now. But I'm expecting that no longer than, and I'm kind of looking in the back, no longer than 30 minutes maximum?
I believe it's that long.
Yeah, exactly. Not easy.
That way, we, that way, we just end our meeting at 1:30. We take a 10-minute break right now and reconvene. It looks like we have a consensus on that. So let's reconvene at 1:02, and we will take up our 6.9 item and close out this meeting. All right. Welcome back. We're going to take up item 6.9, our 1:00 PM, Discussion and Presentation Regarding Proposition 36 on the State Election Ballot. Vice Chair Crandall and myself sponsored this item. We had a discussion with our district attorney, Susan Cronus. She mentioned that she wanted to bring this to the board. We wanted to make sure that it came in front of the public and the board prior to the election ballots being submitted. That's coming out soon, and we just wanted to have this discussion. I will apologize. I did not link the actual text of Proposition 36 on the memo, so my apologies for not doing so. I should have done that, so I'll slap my hand at one time or another during this discussion. Vice Chair Crandall, unless you have anything else you want to add?
No.
I will pass this on to Susan Cronus and Luke Bingham, our undersheriff, for them to let us know what Proposition 36 is all about and the potential impacts to their departments.
Okay. Thank you very much for having us here and giving us this opportunity. I really appreciate you setting this up quickly, so thank you so much. I'm here to talk about the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act, which is Prop 36 on the ballot in November. Now, I just want to state that this is my opinion. I'm not taking a position in terms of, oh, telling people what you should vote. I'm not telling people how to vote. But I'm telling people, based on my experience and working with, you know, in my position for many, many years, over 30 years, as a deputy DA and as a DA now, this is my opinion as to this act, and I'm going to vote yes on it. So that is, and I'm going to tell you why my opinion is that. But I want to just briefly outline the, what it covers. It covers a lot of different things, but there's... It covers a lot of different things, but there's two important things that it covers involving drugs and theft and crimes involving drugs and theft. So basically, the bottom line, how this came about is since Prop 47 was passed many years ago, there has been an increase, that Prop 47 reduced, first of all, reduced the amount of, or increased the amount of money that you could steal to not, over $950 and it would still be a misdemeanor if it's under $950. So it's always a misdemeanor, no matter how many times you go in to, let's say, the store, steal, you could do it every day. And if it's under $950, it cannot be aggregated and you cannot charge a felony. Our office cannot charge a felony. It also changed the drug laws that if you are in possession of a drug, we cannot charge a felony, no matter how many times you've been in possession of drugs. And believe me, I've seen many, many cases since Prop 47 where people have a defense that 30 or 40 or 50 grams of methamphetamine or fentanyl or other drugs, hard drugs, are for personal use. So the whole point of Prop 36 is, is that there have to be real consequences for people to get the help that they need. And the emphasis on this bill, on this proposition, is for people to get the help that they need, drug treatment and drug treatment that's going to work. And it takes a lot to get over an addiction and you need possible consequences of jail or maybe prison before you're going to take that leap and, and go to drug treatment and take it seriously. So in terms of drugs, for simple possession, you are eligible for drug diversion or treatment. That's the law right now. And the law for possession that could be charged as a felony is at the discretion of the DA, but that's currently only for possession for sale. So the Proposition 47, now you cannot file felony for possession. The result is, is that, as I said, the people are not seeking treatment even for large amounts of personal possession drugs. So the change would be that it would, first of all, an important change, it would add fentanyl to the list of existing hard drugs, which it's not currently. It would promote drug treatment for simple possession and it would basically require if you have two or more convictions for possession, then you can, the DA's office can charge a felony after those two possession charges. But it's still at the discretion of the DA. Doesn't have to be a felony, but it gives us that discretion. For drug possession for sale or sales of drugs, it would allow us to charge, well, it's already a felony, but after two or more convictions for possession for sale, we could, you could be sent to state prison instead of the local jail. And that would be considered a much more severe consequence than just local jail, prison. It would also allow us to charge, charges, if you're armed with a firearm, with possession of hard drugs, then it could also be a felony that could send you to prison. So those are the changes. In theft, in the theft realm, currently, if it's under $950, you can never charge a felony. So this does allow you to aggregate. The new law would allow you, us to aggregate the amount. So if you went into a store every day, stole like $300 here, $400 there, then it would allow us to aggregate those amounts to reach the over $950 amount. Right now, we cannot do that. So we have to charge each case separately as a misdemeanor. And basically, it allows individuals to go in and steal a large amount of merchandise from stores. It does, it's also in regards to people stealing from other people, people stealing from the elderly. If it's under 950, it's still only a misdemeanor. The law would change that and it would allow us to aggregate those amounts for different days. It would also allow us to, if you have two or more misdemeanor petty theft cases, convictions, then the third one, we could charge as a felony. And that would be a local jail felony, but if you have four or more convictions, then you could be sent to state prison. So it also increases the consequences and it adds additional time if a person steals amounts over $50,000 or more. It could add a year or two or three to the sentence depending on the increase over $50,000. Judges will still have discretion, as well as the DA's will still have discretion as what to charge in each specific case. The point here is, is that we want to emphasize diversion programs, whether it be drug, drug treatment or mental health treatment, to have, give defendants a consequence if they don't go into drug treatment and make that more favorable to them than just basically five days in jail or 10 days in jail, which, what they're getting now if they commit these offenses. This will also impact so-called smash and grab cases. And again, depending on the value of the items taken, they can, now these individuals can be sent to prison instead of just the local jail. So basically, that's in it in a nutshell. It would be a valuable tool for me as a DA to keep this community a lot safer, to stop the constant petty thefts that are going on in our stores. And it has real-life consequences for people who, you know, $950 is a lot of money for a lot of people. So I, but these are the reasons why I am going to be voting yes on Prop 36. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. Luke Bingham, undersheriff, sheriff's office. And again, like the DA said, I'm speaking from my own personal opinion on this, but just speaking from some of the experience and knowledge that I have. DA Cronus has pretty much covered the Prop 36 and what it's about. The way we see it in the sheriff's office, and I see it from my point of view, is that we've seen a marked increase in drug possessions, fentanyl cases, and et cetera. One of the things that she didn't cover in Prop 36 is a mandate that if somebody is arrested for possession of fentanyl for sales, then they are given a notice in court similar to a DUI. If you get your first DUI in court, then you're noticed in court that you understand that driving while intoxicated is a crime and you understand it's a threat to the community and that by, if you continue this behavior and continue to drive while intoxicated, that you can cause great bodily injury or death to somebody on the street. And then that assists the DA's office and the sheriff's office and California Highway Patrol in our investigations of injury and death accidents related to DUI. Prop 36 would also add that to fentanyl cases where that person is notified that by dealing those controlled substances, there's a likelihood that by your actions, somebody else is going to suffer death or great bodily injury. That assists the sheriff's office and assists the DA's office with prosecution in those fentanyl overdose cases or toxicity cases. So I think that's a good part to it. I've always been a believer that simply incarcerating somebody is not going to solve the problem. There's a many, many different social aspects to why people use drugs and why people steal, but the reality of it is, is if you talk to anybody who's involved in any type of treatment programs until somebody hits rock bottom and makes the, the personal decision to change their life, they're never going to change their life. And I understand that by sending somebody to treatment, that we can't force somebody into treatment. But I have, one of the best analogies I heard was the other day at the judge's breakfast. I was talking to a gentleman that had spent almost 30 years in a treatment facility and he says, you can, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink, but they're at the water trough and sooner or later, they're going to get thirsty and they're going to drink. So some of this gives some teeth to the DA's office to send people to treatment programs. And if we're providing them with the education and we're providing them with the information and they have that so that when they finally make that decision in life that they want to make that change, we've provided them with the education, we've provided them with the path, they know where to go to make that change in life. And those are the things that we're looking at. When it comes to the theft side of things, we've seen a marked increase in thefts. Unfortunately, I don't have the stats in front of me. This kind of came up rather quick for this meeting, so I wasn't able to run the stats. But we've seen a marked increase in both drug arrests, drug crimes for possession of narcotics, sales, and then our theft crimes have increased in the sheriff's office. And again, we've gone to the same locations four, five, six times and our hands are essentially tied. We give somebody a citation for a misdemeanor theft, we send them down the road and they go to the DA's office, they get a slap on the wrist essentially, and they're out there doing it again and affecting our community. And again, simply incarcerating them isn't going to solve the problem, but there has to be some teeth that's going to convince somebody that I don't want to do that. I want to change the way I'm doing, or simply, let's be honest, there are criminals in this world and just that's what they are and that's what they will always be. And you have to deal with them. The majority of the people, we can hopefully change their mind through different social programs and support and treatment. We can change their status in life, how they're living and help them better themselves and their families. And some people, quite frankly, just need to go to jail because they're going to continuously victimize our community. And we need to take them out of the community to protect our community. And it's frustrating for our deputies and my deputies when we go to the same house over and over again, or we go to the same store over and over again, and all we can do is tell that business owner, sorry that you've lost $5,000 this month by being constantly petty theft, but all we can do is give them a citation and move on. So this is going to help some of that. And quite frankly, Prop 47 has been in effect for 10 years and we have not seen a betterment in our criminal justice system and our crimes. They're continuing and they're increasing, so it's, it's quite frankly, time to try something different. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah, so I just wanted to thank you for that, undersheriff and district attorney. Just wanted to, just note that, I want to say it was in July when we had our RCRC meeting, the RCRC Board of Directors adopted a support position for this unanimously because of everything that's been stated. I know also in the community, because I get, I reach out to sheriff and whatnot, and there's situations where they are committing crimes, but it's, they've already been arrested three or four times. They get out, they do the same thing again, they're emboldened. So this is, this is a result of Prop 47 and some of the folks don't realize that's what it is. They think that both aren't doing their jobs per se, but it's, your hands are tied. And so, so this, this proposition looks to at least assist with that. So I know that in those, those meetings that we've had, we had a district attorney from El Dorado County and Yolo County come and talk to us about the struggles as well, so.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Supervisor Green?
I appreciate the disclaimer that you're expressing your personal opinions. That said, I have to note, we're here in the middle of a board of supervisors meeting. If we were going to bring an item on any of the many ballot measures facing voters in the state of California, and I'm thinking of one that I was hoping to get a board position on, but time is running short, that would have been an item to bring forward. But to sit here on the county's dime and express your personal opinions, I think, is a little disingenuous. Also, if you do, and I do encourage all voters to read their voter pamphlet, the fiscal impacts of this particular proposition does indicate that it would potentially increase local court-related workload and would increase county jail populations, county supervision populations, and by the institution of treatment mandated felonies, very likely could impact behavioral health and other county agencies. So, and reduce grant funding that I assume some of our agencies receive through Proposition 47 because there are grant programs that are issued through that using savings. So I totally get the frustration of people with Proposition 47, maybe that went a couple steps too far, but I can't see anything sitting here today that would suggest we're in any better shape to financially handle the changes requested by this. Is it your understanding that your core workload could potentially increase, that your jail population could potentially increase if this measure passes?
It could potentially increase, but again, the decision for that felony charging is still within the DA's discretion. It's not an automatic, if you have somebody who committed two petty thefts and then their third one is the theft of a $5.99 sandwich from Safeway, it doesn't mean that the DA's office has to charge that felony, that third one. It's an aggregate kind of a thing and then how many, and how extreme is that crime? So, and I agree with you that there is a cost to this, but it is, where are we comfortable with that cost being? Because right now, that cost is being borne by our community, our business members and our community members that are the victims of these drug crimes and the theft crimes. So if we do nothing, then our community continues to be the victims of those crimes and bore that, bear that cost versus the state and the county. So I don't think there's anything we can do that's not going to be a cost, but I think, as I've stated, there needs to be more teeth in the crime to try to dissuade and change some of that behavior.
I just would state too, that in actuality, I think that the change in the law by Prop 47, reducing the, basically to misdemeanors, anything $950 or, or less is a misdemeanor, has actually increased the caseload, especially in misdemeanors. And, and it has increased the work for law enforcement as well because when we have a situation where somebody goes in and steals and, from a store and they cite them out and that's all they can do as a misdemeanor, then the next day they go in and again and again, that's more law enforcement that has to, to go back to the store for another misdemeanor, give another citation. It has actually increased the caseload in misdemeanors. And it is also, you know, basically, I think, the impact, the aggregation aspect of it as well. If we are able to aggregate the case, then instead of, you know, five separate cases that have to be charged as misdemeanors, we can now only charge, now we can aggregate it, whether it's a misdemeanor or not, we can still aggregate it so it's going to be one complaint, one court appearance, one trial. So I see a lot of ways that this is going to save money and not increase costs for our county.
Vice Chair Crandall?
Different staff, different departments come to us and talk about the tools they need to do their job. This is the undersheriff and the district attorney sharing with them what's hindering them from being able to do their jobs. And so they're consistently, over and over, going out. It's like, it's like getting a check that never clears because the neighbors are sitting there saying taxation without representation. I mean, that's the most, that's the most recent thing I've got and they're saying that they're not doing their jobs. And they are, they're out there. The tax, their taxes are being paid for because they're out there. It's just not getting the result they want. And that's because of this state law. So they're sharing with us what's hindering them from being able to do their jobs and they're sharing this so that the public can see. And if they want to make their determination to keep allowing it the way it is, they can make their determination. And the undersheriff and the district attorney are just sharing their personal opinion. I don't see anything wrong with that. We did it at the... We did it at the RCRC Board, and, so I, I don't see it the same way, do you, Supervisor Green?
And I, I think that this is just supposed to provide some insights, at least from our departments, to the public as they prepare to vote. The public is completely aware of the internet and their ballot booklet that they received in order to continue to educate themselves on this. This is something that we were happy to hear, that you wanted to discuss this publicly, because we hear it a lot of times from our stores locally, from, from our businesses, some of the issues that they're dealing with, and some of the frustrations that they're dealing with. I will say that there are some things that I, I feel the need to at least put out there. Yes, $950 seems like a lot, but it's actually the seventh from the bottom of the list in the entire states, that you have to get a felony charge if you're above that. Texas is 2,500. Now, maybe there's some other outcomes with misdemeanors that don't exist in the state of California, that make that a apples-to-oranges, and not apples-to-apples comparison, but we are on the lower side of the 50 states when it comes to what is deemed a felony, and $950 is closer to the bottom of the list than it is to the top of the list. But there has to be consequences, because if our businesses are hurting, then eventually the services we provide to the community are hurting, and we have this even, it's, it's amplified by this feeling of not being safe, when we see people being violated, and, and people taking advantage of those situations. And I think we need to make sure that we even, I don't want to say perception, but we need to feel safe. And seeing people walk out of stores with shopping carts filled, which I'm going to assume, I'm not the only one that has witnessed those things happening, as people run after them, and/or are told not to run after them, is not a normal thing that we should get used to, that, we should not normalize that. I think leading people towards getting the help they need is the right thing. I get concerned that we have changed to wait for them to be ready, and I'm almost in the side of thinking, are we waiting for them to die? If we don't help to lead them towards that, yeah, they have to make that final choice. But we have drugs out here that are so much deadlier than what we experienced when we were young, where experimental did not necessarily mean at this level of potential rate of death that we're seeing. We're seeing young people dying at a rate that we've never seen before because of that. So if we can help lead them towards rehabilitation, that's great. I do worry, where's the rehabilitation? Because we are low on the agencies and facilities that can provide that kind of care. We all want to do our best, but we have to really work on the grand scheme of everything. I don't think Prop 47 was a problem in its intent, in its practicality, it hasn't worked out. You can't reduce drug consequences without offering more choices and more availability of drug rehab, things like that. And so I think that we are trying to rectify some of the problems that we've had. I do want to talk about something that hasn't been talked about at all, which is the beginning of the name of this act, which is homeless reduction. I think there's a unfortunate connotation that homelessness is drugs, and homelessness is crime. And, and to me, it's, it's, it has a little bit of a overlap, but it's not entirely an overlap. So about 30% of our homeless population has drug addiction issues. I think we need to make sure to recognize that 70% do not have a drug addiction issue. And so just because we're leading people towards drug rehab, doesn't necessarily mean we're reducing homelessness. Just because now people are getting consequences for stealing, doesn't necessarily mean you're reducing homelessness. Yes, when we depopulated our prisons, which was based on a Supreme Court case, we just had a conversation, that 30% of our probation caseload is experiencing homelessness. So there's definitely potential that it increased the homelessness population because of that decrease in prison population. But until we deal with our housing, until we deal with the cost of housing, that has a lot to do with our homelessness, if not more than anything else. But I think that consequences are a necessary part of our toolkit in order to ensure that we create the right type of order that we're looking for in our communities, which is for people to freely walk around, freely enjoy the communities we have, and feel safe. And I think that we've definitely moved towards a not feeling as safe as we used to feel. Granted, it's not the 90s, where there was some very high violent crimes, but these are, we're talking about non-violent crimes today. We're not talking about violent ones. The last part, the, the fentanyl additions, I know that, I believe we have one in Lake County, correct me if I'm wrong, but there have been multiple cases for attempted murder for sales of fentanyl. I, I really believe we, we need to continue in looking in that direction, because if you are selling that stuff knowingly, if you have been warned that that stuff can kill, and you continue to do so, we, we have to have consequences, because it's really hurting our, our, our community as we speak. So I, I appreciate, I think every day that we're up on this dais, we're providing opinions. So thank you for sharing yours, and to the public, please do your research, please vote accordingly to your beliefs and your opinions as well. But I do appreciate you both coming up and providing some discussion points for today. So thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
We're going to open it up for public comment.
Oh, okay.
And seeing if anybody wishes to speak. I see no hands in the Zoom room, and we have our sole public member in the chamber coming up.
Hi, Elaine Brown. Officer, I appreciated your point on, like, stopping it before it gets there, and prevention is, an ounce of prevention is worth everything. And so often, by the time they get to the point where they're in your hands, it's a lot harder. I know 10 years ago, it was 8,500 to educate a child, but 60, 60,000 to put someone in a prison. A lot of discrepancy and funny money. So if we could possibly, I don't know if they have the DARE program anymore, but when I was young, we were just coming out of the 60s, when I entered elementary school, tons of education on drugs, just tons, and a lot of money put towards that. The DARE program came into being when I was a teacher, but as a child, truly, we had LSD. They brought in movies, they brought in all these different things to really scare us out of that, and it really, it made a difference in my generation. And so I just really expressed, you know, if we can, as a board, find those ways, and it's going to take 20 years to see that totally change, but if you can put that ounce of prevention in, and money well-spent, then, just so it doesn't end up in the situation, because oftentimes, they get into prisons or jails, and they come out worse than they went in, and I've seen that firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please.
Yeah, and just, I appreciate your comment, and just to respond to that and give you a little bit of update with the Sheriff's Office, we are currently working with the Lake County Board of Education to develop a program to bring into all of our school districts, K through 12, to talk about fentanyl and drugs, and, and all of those signs and warnings, and how to avoid it for, for our youth in the educational system.
And I know that behavioral health is in our middle schools and in our high schools, talking about the same topics. I know Richard Okino, and I believe he has a partner that does that and goes school to schools, and they're doing a great job, and we can't be doing it alone, it takes parents, it takes community, and all of the above, but those things are happening as well. All right, that's it. We're going to close down public comment, and again, thank you very much for being part of this discussion. And that will conclude our meeting today. We have no closed session, so have a wonderful afternoon and evening.